We are commencing our meeting again for the Cupertino City Council, June 1st meeting, regularly scheduled. We are now on items four and five, as well as six and seven. That all falls under reports by council and staff. We allocate a total of approximately 10 minutes for each of these, in total, I should say. So item number four is a set of brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. The purpose of this really is to serve as a placeholder for any immediate follow-ups that we hear from oral communications more than anything else. I'll take hands from council if anyone would like to speak on this item, noting that we already did carve out a particular section of it for our city manager's announcement. I don't see hands raised at this time from our city council, and so I will move on to item number five, and that is the city manager update on emergency response efforts. Madam City Manager, would you like to give us the good news?
I will give you a quick update. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder to everyone, we are currently in the yellow tier, expected to last, of course, until June 15th, when the state has telegraphed that they're going to be rolling back some of the requirements and certainly the framework around those business tiers. The county has released a new order that mostly aligns with the state on all capacity of social distancing restrictions, including the use of face coverings. Many of the previous restrictions are no longer necessary because there is an increasing and widespread vaccination and fewer cases of COVID-19 in the community. The county requires that all businesses and government agencies ascertain the vaccination status of all employees, contractors, and volunteers in the workplace as a going-in position for reopening. Vaccination status, county-wide, we are at 76.2% vaccinated. The county goal is 85% vaccinated by June 15th, which the county believes is attainable. Testing. There's another testing opportunity at the senior center tomorrow, June 2nd, 2021, from 9:30 to 3:45. And Cupertino specifically, there are 929 cases by zip code and 940 cases by city. On May 18th, 2021, I reported 930 cases and 941 cases by city. Apparently, there's a little bit of a data adjustment by one. But there has been, in terms of case rates, very slow growth on the case rates reflected in Cupertino and following the same patterns countywide. We also have a very high vaccination rate, with some areas being 95% vaccinated, and the lowest I saw was about 72% to 73% vaccinated. So we are making great progress. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Madam City Manager. Item number six is our report on committee assignments. Our committee assignments report period spans May 19th until today, inclusive. That is all of our committee assignment contacts ever since our previous city council meeting on May 18th. And so I see Councilmember Willie with a hand raised first, and so Councilmember Willie, you have the floor.
I apologize for being a tad bit late and missed that report previous. I would like to back up just a tad to that. So at the previous council meeting, you know, I mentioned-
Okay, Councilmember Willie, let me make that explicit, and let me ask our city attorney, should I ask for a vote to do that, or can I just reopen item number four? What do you think would be appropriate?
The reports by council and staff of brief announcements don't need to be agendized under the Brown Act, so if-
Okay, all right. Councilmember Willie, let's, do you mind combining your comments since we are in item number six with committee assignments at this point?
I will, yeah, I'll try and keep them within the-
Okay, and then just signpost them and tell us when you're talking about a brief report under four and your committee assignments under six. Thanks.
So, very important that the 5D cells in residential areas are still a big concern to residents, and at the last city council meeting, I said that I was reaching out to Verizon to meet with them one-on-one about a community team approach. And I did that this last week, met with Alex, one-on-one, in person, outside of the senior center at the tables, proposed my thinking on that for a community-based team, of which Verizon would be a participant, and he said that he welcomed that, and that although he couldn't make any assurances or decisions at the time, he would bring it back to management at Verizon and then get back to me, and he said he'll be getting back to me this week. Again, I say this in the hopes that our residents will see that we are trying to find ways to work this important issue for our community. Okay, on to committee assignment. I'll try and be real brief. So on the 26th, we had the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority, and the topic that monopolized the meeting was the shooting at the VTA yard. And the reason it's important to kind of bring up is that it had the Santa Clara Sheriff's Department, it had the San Jose Police Department, and they had the San Jose Fire Department all involved, and the new system that is up and online essentially merged all those agencies together so that they were all able to converse and hear what the other agencies were doing during this emergency. And then the takeaway is that the system under that type of an emergency was running at around 20% to 2% capacity, and so they felt that that was a very good capability of the system. Third one, we just real brief, didn't have a meeting of Silicon Valley Clean Energy, but it is important that they have sent out notification that they have financial assistance programs for the community, and if, for those who might need it, go to the Silicon Valley Clean Energy website, and it'll take you to some links, so that there are several different programs depending on what category you might fall into to get financial assistance due to this pandemic period. And so with that, I'll end it. Thank you very much for fitting it in, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie, and I appreciate you signposting the items. I don't see another hand raised at this point, although Councilmember Way, you have raised your hand, so-
Yes, I have a brief report. Thank you, Mayor Paul. On May 20th, I attend our city's Disaster Council Committee meeting, and this is to review our city's COOP Plan, C-O-O-P, Continuity of Operations Plan, and also has the Continuity of Government Plan embedded. This actually, the mission is actually very COVID-19 appropriate, because it is to ensure that the city operates during emergencies, to protect our employees, visitors, residents, operations, and facilities. And we have a lot of people there. Chief Dana Reed from Santa Clara County Director Office of Emergency was there, Jean Oberhofer from the Citizens Corp liaison was there, and Tom Ching from the Office of Emergency Services were there. We reviewed the plans, and actually, coming easing out of COVID-19 would be a great way for our staff to reflect how this plan works. So it is to ensure that we, our government continues to function, the departments continue to function within 12 hours of emergencies, and continue to function for 30 days or until the disaster is resolved or a long-term plan is established. So it is really a very good reflection, review, and coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Way. I don't see another hand raised at this point, and so I will go ahead and provide my report since May 18th. On May 19th, we had a finance committee meeting of the Library Joint Powers Authority. The library is in very good fiscal health. I was able to look at a comparison with regard to pension liability funding, and I'm very pleased to report that their percentage of pension liability covered is actually lower than ours, not so much as a statement to their fiscal health, but as an assertion that at that percentage, in the low 70s, it's actually considered very well-funded. And so we're at the point right now where we're looking in the mid-to-high 70 percentage of points. So I think we're in very good stead there comparatively. On May 20th, I know this is a topic of conversation that is imbued with tragedy at this time. I'm on the VTA SSTPO Committee. That stands for Safety, Security, and Transit Planning and Operations. This was six days before the tragedy that occurred last week, and so there were a few items that were within operations and safety. I will recommend item number seven to the public, because I thought it was an excellent presentation on some legally required future transitions from our bus fleet, from being hybrid to being either all-electric or perhaps hydrogen-fueled. And so that was a very good preview of the climate-action-oriented requirements by the legislation of the state of California and its impact upon VTA. The following day, we had a VTA board meeting, and, you know, I know that these are under very challenging conditions, but we were able, after a two-month-long search, to identify and hire a permanent executive director to take the place of Nuria Fernandez, who is now in the Biden administration. The new executive director of VTA is Carolyn Gonat. She is currently heading up the Utah Transportation Authority, and I did go to a press conference on Thursday morning of last week, supporting the employees' families from the tragedy of last Wednesday's shooting. Carolyn did fly in from Utah on Wednesday night to be with us there on Thursday morning. So that was the purpose of the meeting on the 21st, to welcome Carolyn in. Challenging conditions, but I know that we'll pull together and move forward. Finally, on May 26th, on the same day, the West Valley mayors and managers met at noon. We had a good discussion, as we usually do. It's limited in time, and we were able to touch base with the other cities in the West Valley. So, you know, I guess, Madam City Manager, since that will be your last WVMM meeting, did you want to add anything to that summary with regard to what was discussed, or any points to be shared with the public?
I don't think so, Mr. Mayor, but thank you for the opportunity. I would say that the West Valley mayors and managers meeting was one of the first I attended when I came in, and always has topically significant, a topically significant agenda that's specific to the West Valley cities, which I think is really good. There's just some things on the West Valley that, like transportation, that affects all of us differently than the rest of the county. So I've really appreciated those forums, and the discussions are always really relevant.
And of course, you'll join us for the June meeting, but in July, you won't be able to report out, so I wanted to-
Correct. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised now.
Yeah. So on the 24th, I attended the Audit Committee meeting, and then we reviewed the internal assessment, and then it will be coming to the council with some staff recommendations for what specific things we should look deeper. And one recommendation might be sports center or senior center spending, and among other things, maybe contract services. And then on the 26th, we had Santa Clara, Santa Cruz Airport Noise Roundtable Meeting, and this was paused since January. And then we were presented, FAA did a new noise study of 20 airports, and then found out that the noise level most residents can, would report that they are annoyed is actually a lot lower. That means FAA standard is higher than what people would usually report as annoyed. And then therefore, we are writing a letter to FAA to see whether this new data could lead to new policy change, or that we can have better metric to capture this noise level. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Seeing another hands, I will now move on to the next item on our agenda, and that item is also under reports by city and council and staff, and this is truly good news, as it always is, the annual pavement report. And I do ask staff to, you know, try to keep cognizant of our time constraints, but Director Lee, and of course, Madam City Manager, if you'd like to introduce the item as well, but I see Director Lee has turned on his camera and his microphone.
We are ready to go. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. Each year, we look forward to our opportunity to present to you and to the community the pavement report. Considerable planning and effort goes into the pavement management program. Presenting the report this evening is Project Manager Joanne Johnson. Joanne has managed the pavement program for the last seven years and is responsible for most every detail of the program. This includes the coordination of which streets are selected for treatment, coordinating with utility companies through upcoming work to help prevent our newly paved streets from being dug up, preparing requests for bids, and maintaining our street network certification with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. This last responsibility is very important, because without this certification, the city would not be eligible for external funding such as gas tax or Measure B. With that said, Joanne, please begin the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. With approximately 138 sideline miles within the city's street network is one of our most valued assets maintained by the city. Our community has benefited from this council and councils prior that have made pavement preservation a high priority. It is my pleasure to report that the city's street network is in very good shape. The state of the network is measured by its Pavement Condition Index, or PCI. As shown in this slide, our current PCI is an 84. I will get into more detail on what PCI values mean in the following slides. What is good to note here is that our network will rate third when compared to over 100 agencies in nine Bay Area counties. This slide shows the trend of PCI over the last 10 years. In 2015, the city began to invest heavily in the rehabilitation of our city's street network with the goal of reaching a PCI equal to or greater than 82. This slide shows various ranges in PCI and a description of the physical condition that may be observed within a particular range. As you can see, 90% of our street network is in very good or good categories, and only a minor percentage fall within the fair, good, or poor categories. Each year, the pavement management program focuses on rehabilitation of streets within the lower categories and preventive maintenance on streets within the good category. An example of how at-risk streets are scheduled for improvement is included in this evening's consent calendar, where the city council is asked to consider the award of the 2021 pavement maintenance Phase 1 project. For this project, 17 streets with a PCI of 69 or lower are scheduled for improvement. As the number of streets within the fair or failed category decreases, the city can maintain PCI more cost-effectively with a higher emphasis on preventive maintenance versus rehab. Every dollar spent on preventive maintenance can save $6 to $10 in future expenditures should the pavement condition be allowed to deteriorate. Shown here is the average PCI by a functional classification, including arterial collector and residential street. Arterial street example would be Stevens Creek Boulevard or Deansa. Collector's streets would be Miller Avenue or Stelling Road. What is important to note here is that our highly-traffic streets are in very good condition. The city utilizes an asset management program called Street Saber to plan paving projects and calculate budget needs. The program includes a decision tree that determines appropriate maintenance treatments based on the street segment PCI, functional classification, and types of distresses observed. The data is regularly updated to include current treatment costs. In order to maintain PCI at current level, an annual budget of $3 million is recommended. In this current fiscal year, the budget was decreased due to uncertainty, or economic uncertainties brought on the COVID-19, as well as the good condition of our street network. As the economy continues to reopen and gas tax revenue return to pre-COVID levels, it is recommended to return to the $3 million level. And this slide will show a recommended projects for this fiscal year and next. I had already discussed the Phase 1 project. The 2021 pavement maintenance Phase 2 project will be funded by FY '22, or fiscal year '22 SB1 revenues. This project will focus on preventive maintenance of streets in good condition. Measure B revenue will be used to fund the needed $2 million for the 2022 pavement maintenance project. And as a side note, the city also expects to receive 1.5 million in gas tax revenues that can be used for other street and road maintenance projects such as concrete, crack seal, or clog seal. And this slide just shows the projected pavement condition index under various funding scenarios. The recommended $3 million per year effort, we would maintain a PCI of 84 through 2024 and beyond. Should we choose to do no maintenance, the PCI would drop by two points per year. And the next slides just show some examples of street work that was done. Previous projects, these particular projects were completed in early 2020. That concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Roger. And as I had stated earlier, this is always a nice presentation to receive, and to be able to have been a part of that council in 2015 that allocated a very significant amount of money, it was $7 million for pavement maintenance back then, but that dollar really stretched a long way, because we were still coming out of the recession, and council really appreciated the fact that we were able to leverage a lot of the work that needed to be done and the appetite to do that work with the money for pavement maintenance. So happy to be carrying that forward to today, and I thank our Public Works Department for keeping up the quality of our roads. They've certainly been on a par that I hadn't seen prior to 2015, and subsequent to since then, I think we're setting a really, a good pace for the region. I don't see any hands raised from either our council or the public, and so I'll thank our city staff for their maintenance, as well as this presentation, and we'll move on to item number eight through 14 at this point. And so the consent calendar is eight through 14. I see Councilmember Moore has a hand raised. Would you like to speak to a motion or to take any items off of the consent calendar at this point?
I would like to take item 12 off of consent.
Okay, item 12 is removed from consent. I see the member of the public has lowered a hand, and so may I have a motion for items eight through 14, except 12, to move the consent calendar?
Mayor Paul.
Yes, Council, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, I just want to make an announcement, an announcement that I have an amended desk item for the council minutes of May 18, and per our usual process, I can bring them back as a clean set for approval at the next meeting, but they are redlined and in with the written materials for the meeting.
And so is your request, Madam City Clerk, that we remove item number 11 as well from the motion?
Yes.
Okay, may I have, may I have a motion for eight, nine, 10, 13, and 14? Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
So moved.
Maybe we have a second for that. Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on consent items eight, nine, 10, 13, and 14?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Pursuant to the city clerk's comments on item number 11, I would like to move that we continue this item to June 15th with the direction, as provided by the city clerk, to staff to bring this item back at that time. May I have a second for that? Councilmember Way?
I'll second it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Is there any hand raised to discuss? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on item number 11?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Well, given the fact that item 12 is my request to the staff through our city manager, I'll go ahead and introduce the item. What's happened in the past and up through the current part of the year is that we have agenda review meetings, and those agenda review meetings are grouped into three. I have my mayor's meeting, in which I set the agenda for the upcoming meeting and consider on first draft the next meeting down, and so we cover two meetings there. And then there is a Thursday review session before our Tuesday meeting that is comprised of two people. That has been consistently, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, council members Willie and Moore. And then on the Monday Agenda Review Meeting, that's been consistently this year, Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Way. So in an effort to try to mix things up, so to speak, but also in a less colloquial fashion, give people more of opportunities to work with each other, but also to see what the mayoral agenda review setting process is about, I came up with a proposed schedule of how we could potentially work out the rest of the year. And so if you'd like, I can go ahead and share, I'm sorry, I wasn't really prepared for this to be pulled, and so I do appreciate that happening, but, okay, I do have it actually here. So I'll go ahead and, you know, I have a report as well, but I'll go ahead and just pull the, I think, was this the, no, actually, I'm sorry, I had a three-page version that respectfully was kind of nixed by the city attorney's office. So I don't know if I have the, I'll need a little bit of time to pull up the actual agendaized packet, but Councilmember Moore, since you requested the polling on the item, was there a particular statement or question that you wanted to make with respect to this item?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I really appreciate the opportunity that you're giving us to sit in on your meetings, and I do want the public to be made aware of this process, which we have had so far. And there are some drawbacks with it due to the Brown Act when we have been in our agenda review meetings. And what I mean by that is that it can limit council member's ability to speak to another council member if the meeting has gotten into some kind of deliberation. So I wanted to highlight that, and I'm also curious, moving forward, I am interested in doing this particular process, but I'm curious how other cities do this, and, you know, if you had a council of seven, for instance, or even another, you know, city council with just five, do they, do they team up their council members in the same manner? And I'd actually like to know, you know, what does Saratoga do, what does Campbell do, Sunnyvale, and Los Altos? I'm curious about that. Maybe we could at some point have that information brought to us. I'd like to know how they're handling it. Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks, Councilmember Moore. Appreciate the comment. I was happy to put into the work and make sure that we can, you know, help secure collegial environment for our council, as well as give good exposure to the agenda-setting process, because a lot of this is about passing on the torch and the baton and what have you on your chosen metaphor. But with regard to following up and seeing how other cities do it, what came to mind when you mentioned it was Santa Clara. I could reach out, and I think Santa Clara actually does have seven, but as for the other cities, kind of expanding the scope, I probably wouldn't have the bandwidth to talk to all five of the cities, but I'd be happy to make a report out briefly in our next council meeting to reach out to, you know, that city to see how they conduct their agenda reviews, and maybe staff can take it under advisement to look into the other cities you named. I think there were Saratoga, Sunnyvale, Los Altos, and perhaps one more. It was a Los-
Those cities surrounding us, right? Just check it out. We can help with that.
Right. You know, and actually, you know, speaking of surrounding us, I mean, San Jose, you know, their processes are actually very well-developed because of the fact, you know, they have a much bigger city, and they do have a rules committee that kind of sets the agendas as well. So it should be an interesting cost comparison study, but I don't want to take too much bandwidth out of, you know, staff availability as well, but I mean, if it merits a future agenda item for review- But, I mean, if it merits a future agenda item for review, I mean, I'd be happy to, you know, look into putting that on our future agenda. So just to let the public see what we're talking about here, this is what I'm suggesting with regard to the various meetings. So you've got my Monday mayor's meeting prior to the June 15 meeting, which would be here. So I'm suggesting that Vice Mayor Chow, just kind of taking it in order of seniority, starting with Vice Mayor, sitting with me on June 7. And then for that Thursday agenda review, Councilmember Wei would be taking that agenda review by herself for an important reason that I'll get to in a moment. And then on June 14, Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Willie will be together on the agenda review, where normally on that Monday, it would be Councilmember Wei and Vice Mayor Chow. So then in the following meeting for the July 20 meeting, because we're skipping the first meeting in July, Councilmember Willie will be sitting with me. And then you'll notice that Vice Mayor Chow is by herself. And the reason for that is that on June 7, we'll be going over two agendas. And so we'll be going over both the June 15 agenda and the July 20 agenda. And so I don't want to kind of inadvertently create a serial meeting between myself, Vice Mayor Chow, and whoever Vice Mayor Chow shares the Thursday agenda review with. And so there you see Vice Mayor Chow taking that Thursday agenda review by herself with staff. And then on the following Monday, you have Councilmember Moore together with Councilmember Wei. And that's a combination that hasn't occurred, you know, up to date in this year. And so the various combinations, as represented here in this column, are evenly distributed. And so that's what I mean by the ability of our councilmembers to have more exposure to each other within the context of the agenda setting review process. So, you know, thank you for that opportunity to share this. I do see a couple of hands raised from Councilmember Wei and Vice Mayor Chow. And so Councilmember Wei and Vice Mayor Chow, do you mind if I go to the member of the public that has a hand raised before we go? I see a sent from Councilmember Wei. Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to say something first before we go to the public speaker?
Yeah, we can go to public.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we'll go over to our member of the public with a hand raised, and that is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I think this proposed schedule is a significant improvement from the current situation. It provides an opportunity for team building within the councilmembers. It provides individual councilmembers to rotate through more favorable times for their questions. It provides needed training on agenda setting for future to-be mayors. One issue, maybe two issues that I see that I feel should be changed is the councilmember who attends the mayor's meeting forfeits their opportunity to ask any questions on agendized items. This seems not fair. They need to have an opportunity to ask or submit their questions and get answers prior to the council meeting. And a question I had was, I thought in the past, and I'm not sure what past is, maybe 2016, 2017, I thought that the city councilmembers had their own separate time to ask questions. If somebody could cover that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. Much appreciated. Seeing no other hands raised from the public, I'll bring it back. I'll go ahead and address Peggy's questions, seeing as to how I'm sort of the institutional knowledge on council. So the first question Peggy had had to do with whether the person sitting in prospectively with me this year would be able to ask questions. That is true. This is the mayor's agenda setting meeting. And so what I would be requesting under the procedures is that the councilmember sitting in with me does have that ability to ask a question or a set of questions. But I would ask that those be emailed, and I'm underlining here with my hand cursor, to the city manager following the mayor's agenda review and addressed separately. So that's what I'm suggesting as to the procedure for that. I think the trade-off is fair with respect to the experience, and it doesn't kind of freeze, so to speak, that councilmember or the vice mayor for both of the meetings that they're exposed to the agenda setting process, just the one meeting that is in the following week. And so, because of course, in the next meeting's agenda review, that person is alone. And actually, I think that's another trade-off, kind of getting the undivided attention of staff in that kind of solo agenda review process. And to speak to Peggy's other question, I can say that the agenda review process has been kind of a process in flux over the course of my time on council. When I first joined council, yes, we did have individual agenda review process meetings. So all five of us had our own meeting. However, in 2016, when Councilmember Scharf was elected, without really consulting, you know, council, what ended up happening was that at the end of 2016 and the beginning of 2017, these meetings became by request only, but without actually indicating to us that they were by request only. So we just suddenly didn't have agenda review sessions anymore at that point. And so subsequent to that, you know, I did request when I was mayor in 2018 that we reinstitute those going forward. But this year, you know, I've noticed that we did have a structure such that there's the agenda review process, agenda setting meeting for the mayor, and then we have two sets of agenda review meetings, which, you know, I respect the need to kind of, you know, try to save some staff resources. And so what I've tried to do in my proposal here is to make sure that we're not adding meetings to staff's expected schedule. But of course, I think if the desire from council and, you know, the sentiment of the public is such that, well, it does make sense for each councilmember to be fully prepared in the sense that let's have the full meetings with staff on an individual councilmember basis, then I think that it would make sense, perhaps, you know, nearing the end of the calendar year, to have that discussion so that staff can have that expectation going into the following calendar year. I just, I don't want to create a lot of extra work midstream in the middle of this calendar year, which is why I'm proposing when I'm proposing on the basis that I'm proposing it, which is just to keep those meetings that we have and, you know, try to work within those expectations. So again, we're back to council, Vice Mayor Chow, as well as Councilmember Wei. You had your hands up before. Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand up. And so I'll call on you first, and then Councilmember Wei, whose hand is up again as well. Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, so first, a question for the mayor. So in the agenda review before, earlier, did you have all the staff there or it was just with the city manager?
Um, that's a good question. From what I recall, from what I, well, when we had the live meetings, yes, traditionally, that has been a department head meeting and staff members as pertinent to that particular agenda. I don't think that there's a set written policy. And Madam City Manager, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think that there's anything that states these individuals must be at the agenda review meetings. Although there are some, and I'm very appreciative of that, who are there consistently time after time. But certainly, the city manager is always there, the city attorney is always there. I believe the city clerk is always there. And, you know, members of the planning department as well as public works, I mean, they've been consistently in all the meetings, are director of administrative services. And so my recollection from these last six and a half years is that when we've had them, those individuals are generally present. Although, you know, I'm remembering a time when we held them inside of City Hall in a smaller conference room. And it did consistently hold maybe just four or five people. So, I mean, I can't let you hold me to it definitively, but I think for the time that we've been having them, I'd say an average of, you know, four to six staff members are consistently there. In Zoom, it's a lot easier, right, to have a comprehensive, you know, agenda review or mayor's agenda setting meeting with more staff members.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I did hear former councilmember Scharf said that he didn't get the benefit of either agenda review or one-on-one with the city manager. And we are lucky that we have had one-on-one, in addition to the agenda review, also one-on-one time with the city manager to flush out ideas that's beyond what's on the agenda. And then Deb would give us updates of what else that's going on. So we have, that also builds a good rapport with the city manager. So that, really appreciate that, and thank you. And I know this takes a lot of your time to work out this schedule. Thank you for making this attempt. I know it's complicated and there are limitations, but I'm willing to give it a try.
Well, I appreciate it, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I really appreciate this because you are opening up your session for us to see how you set agenda items and so that we can learn from it. And I do have one issue with this. It's maybe it's just me. I like to read my package because usually it comes out Wednesday night, sometimes even Thursday morning. I like to read all the staff reports, make notes to myself, pick up questions, clarifying items. And, you know, so I email Deb and so ask her to email staff. And I need that weekend. I cannot have an agenda review on Thursday morning where, you know, the things come up on Wednesday. And then I won't have time. Something's come up on Thursday morning. I use my agenda review to ask permanent questions, clarification questions. So I email Deb a load of questions, then she sends it to department heads. And then on the agenda review session, I get answers, clarifications, and so I know what's going on. And so I don't ask a lot of questions during council meetings because a lot of my questions being answered. So I really, I have an issue with, I love your idea, you know, to have different councilmembers in the agenda review. I actually love it. I have a good time with Vice Mayor Chow, and we can bounce each other's questions. And sometimes I didn't think of this, she thought of that. So I really enjoyed it. So I would be very open to do an agenda item review with other councilmembers, with Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Willie. But I just can't do it on Thursday. I don't have time to review, to do my question asking, make notes, and clarification. So how can, is it possible you can make that happen?
You know, I think that's a matter of staff scheduling. And I will note that we have 10 regularly scheduled councilmembers, council meetings remaining for the calendar year after this one. And so I just took a look at the chart. You're scheduled, under this proposal, to be there on the Thursday review by yourself, again, on three of those meetings. And so what I would suggest, and I think with enough lead time, we could get it so that you could have your times rescheduled so that essentially staff is spending that time on, a time that's more workable for your preparatory requirements. And so I think it should be workable. I will note that on specifically September 16, while it may look like on the chart you're having an agenda review with Councilmember Willie, actually, those are separate for the reason I was talking about earlier, so as not to create a serial type of risk of a majority meeting of items on that particular agenda. So there are two meetings out of this entirety of the year that it would be added for another staff meeting. But that notwithstanding, you would simply be asking that meeting to float from where it would be on Thursday over to perhaps your preferred time on Monday or Tuesday. So that's what I would suggest, you know. And I think that staff with, you know, that kind of elite time, you know, should be able to work it out. And I'll note that you're actually teed up first on the 10th. You know, Deb's still here. And so I think we could probably just ask outright right now, do you think staff, Deb, would be able to accommodate Councilmember Wei's, you know, desire to be able to have a few days to review the packet before having that staff review? So that we could perhaps move the staff review to June 14, which is that following Monday?
We should be able to accommodate, this is my response, without looking at the calendar.
Right, okay. Well, you know, Councilmember Wei, if you'd be willing to try it out for that one time, and maybe, you know, my apologies in advance. If you have to carve out a good portion of your Wednesday evening, I'm sorry about that. And hopefully, we'll be able to get you to the point where you have it on a day that works out for your requirements in that regard. Okay, I see a hand raised from Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So part of the issue with Thursday, and I, and my being paired up with Councilmember Willie, was that, you know, he had a request that it be on Thursday. And I have to say, you know, there's been days where the agenda came out at 11 o'clock and we had a 12 o'clock meeting, and I'm left cramming. Or I'm left cramming on the Wednesday night and into Thursday for some of those particularly packed agendas. And it's been quite a challenge. And then you couple that with the Brown Act issue and the inability for me to go speak to another councilmember about topics when I've heard things from my fellow councilmen. And it's really, it's been an issue. And so I've done almost six months of this schedule. It's been challenging, a lot of pressure. So, you know, I personally look forward to having a chance to use the weekend to look at an agenda and then ask questions so that they're more meaningful. But I've sat in some of these sessions where I could have just read the agenda alone because it's like I don't know what's on it. I'm just seeing it so briefly and quickly that it's not a productive use of my time. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And so what I'll do at this time is ask that we move the request on the agenda, that we have this agenda setting review schedule going forward as well as the participation in the sitting in on the mayor's agenda setting meetings. And I'd like to add to the request an accommodation, where possible, of individual councilmember preferences as to the Thursday meeting so that we can accommodate scheduling considerations. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. Would you be willing to move that?
I'm second. Well, no, you're having, so moved.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Wei, would you be willing to second?
I'm sorry, I didn't, can you repeat the motion, please?
So the motion is to have the schedule as described in my memo to our city manager. And to the extent that it is possible for staff to work with the individual councilmember with a Thursday meeting, and this is for your request, Councilmember Wei, such that the meeting can be moved to a time that accommodates the councilmember's schedule.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, very good. And I don't see any other hands raised. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call on the motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. We are now on to the next item on our agenda. This is under second reading of ordinances. The item is number 15. The subject is considering and acting on ordinance number 21-2227, which is an ordinance of the city of Cupertino, amending City Code Chapter 10.90 of Title 10 relating to smoking and multi-unit housing. And so this being a second reading, I will go ahead and ask our city manager if there is a staff report that accommodates item number 15.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. There's no formal presentation, but I'll just summarize that this is the ordinance we've seen a few meetings now. And we've made the change from the last meeting to exclude detached single-family homes with or without ADUs or JADUs or second units.
Very good. So this is a second reading of the ordinance proposed as amended in our prior meeting. And so I do see a hand raised from Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow? And so I do see a hand raised from Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, so do I make a motion?
Let me go to any members of the public. I don't see any hands raised from our council and then yours, Vice Mayor Chow. I do see one member of the public, Carol Baker. And I'll remind our members of the public, by the time that Carol is done speaking, you will need to have your hand raised in order to be heard on this item. Carol, you'll have three minutes. Welcome. And...
Good much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the time to speak, but I won't take three minutes. I just want to be sure to thank you. My name's Carol Baker and I'm the co-chair of the Tobacco Free Coalition of Santa Clara County and also an ambassador for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network and a citizen of Cupertino for more than fifty years. I appreciate what you're doing tonight and I want to thank you for considering the rights to healthy air of the ninety percent of Cupertino citizens who do not smoke. Thank you again, and that's all I need to say tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Carol, for your comment and for your brevity. We will bring it back to council. Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand raised. Would you like to introduce the motion to put us into effect on item fifteen?
Yeah, I'll try. So I move that the ordinance number twenty-one dash two-two-two-seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino amending City Code Chapter ten ninety of Title Ten Public Peace, Safety and Morals to prohibit smoking in multi-unit housing and certain outdoor areas, which include a finding that the ordinance exempt from CEQA. And that city clerk's reading constitutes the second reading thereof. Upon approval, I move that ordinance number dash twenty-one dash two-two-two-seven be enacted.
Okay, would anyone like to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion? And I see Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised.
I'd like to second that, please.
Okay, I don't see further hands raised at this point. Madam City Clerk, would you please, oh, Councilmember Moore does have her hand raised now, however. Okay, Councilmember Moore and then Vice Mayor Chow. And don't worry, anyone who might be worried about it. I will ask the city clerk to conduct the second reading prior to our voting on it. Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so I do appreciate the member of the public who just spoke. I do want to mention, my, my late mother had her left lung removed due to lung cancer. And it's still upsetting. So I do appreciate that we are making this move towards passing this ordinance. And I wish everyone well and health. And let's hope this is a start for something better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow.
I have a question regarding the ordinance title mentions multi-unit housing, but the content inside mentions multi-unit residence. So I'm just wondering, is there any significance on this two difference? And I see that the ordinance defines multi-unit residence. However, I wondered, do we define multi-unit housing elsewhere in our municipal code?
Would staff like to address that question as to whether there are potential discrepancies with the definition of multi-unit housing elsewhere in the municipal code?
Yeah.
Madam City Clerk.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor. Thank you. The ordinance title and findings referred to housing, the body that goes in the municipal code uses the term residence and there's not a distinction between those really. We just use the more colloquial term in the, in the title of the ordinance. But the actual municipal amendments will refer to multi-unit residence. And I don't see this...
So these two are interchangeable? Or are they different?
For the purposes of the ordinance, they're the same.
Do I have multi-unit housing defined elsewhere in the municipal code? Or used elsewhere in the municipal code with a definition or not? I'm not sure.
I don't believe so. Does anyone on staff want to help with that?
I don't know the answer to that question, whether it's defined elsewhere in the code. But I do, I will say that I believe that the definitions in this ordinance, there is a statement that these pertain to this section of the municipal code only, if that alleviates any concerns.
So the definition of multi-unit residence is pertain to this section only?
Right, so for the purposes of this ordinance, yeah.
Okay, and multi-unit housing is used because it's more commonly understood.
Right, yes.
But for this ordinance or elsewhere, we are, these two terms are interchangeable? Or are they not?
So in, in terms of this ordinance that we're considering this evening, we're considering them interchangeable.
Okay.
Okay, very good. And so Vice Mayor Chow's comment and question having been addressed, I would like to ask that our city clerk conduct the second reading of this ordinance.
This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number twenty-one dash two-two-two-seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino amending City Code Chapter one zero point nine zero of Title Ten Public Peace, Safety and Morals to prohibit smoking in multi-unit housing in certain outdoor areas, which includes a finding that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Would you please conduct a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Right, thank you very much. We're on to public hearings, item number sixteen. The subject is to consider approval of the renewal with no increase of the nineteen ninety-two storm drain fee and the two thousand nineteen clean water and storm protection fee and an increase in the allowable rebate amount for installation of pervious pavement projects at single-family residences and duplexes. Madam City Manager, would you like to introduce the staff member providing us the presentation tonight for item sixteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be turning this presentation over to Director Lee of Public Works.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My pleasure again to be presenting Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. This report is for the renewal of the city's two stormwater fees. The earliest of these parcel fees date back to nineteen ninety-two and the other fee in twenty nineteen. The purpose of both fees is to maintain and operate the city's stormwater collection system while minimizing pollutants entering into our local creeks. Except, perhaps except for Councilmembers Wei and Moore, the remaining members of council will recall that the renewal of these fees is an annual requirement. Recommended action for this public hearing is for no increase, as was mentioned, to occur for either fee. And I would like to introduce Ursula Sarova, our Environmental Programs Manager. Ursula is responsible for the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program and will be giving the presentation. So Ursula, please.
Great, thank you, Director Lee. Welcome, Ursula. Hi, Ursula. You'll need to unmute yourself first.
Thank you. Tech challenge. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Ursula Sarova, Environmental Programs Manager. As Roger said, with the successful stormwater ballot measure in twenty nineteen, the city now has two property-based fees in place to support compliance with the municipal regional permit as regulated by the, oh, I'm so sorry. Has two property-based fees in place to support compliance with the municipal regional permit as regulated by the California Regional Water Control Board and to support storm protection infrastructure work on our storm drain system. These fees require an annual renewal process in advance of the county assessing the fee on individual properties via property tax bills or direct billed by the city. The applicable rates for the ninety-two fee are shown here. No increase is allowed for this fee, but we annually request that the city council request approving its renewal. Here are the current rates for the twenty nineteen clean water and storm protection fee, which is sensitive to land area and land use commensurate to the cost to provide the service. This fee is applicable to all properties, including school, district lands and city-owned parcels that are exempt from the ninety-two fee. Unlike the ninety-two fee, council has the option to increase the clean water and storm protection fee at CPI with a three percent cap if actual program expenditures increase or fund balances insufficient to cover shortfall. We recommend renewal of this fee with no increase for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Here are just a few examples of the preventative, responsive and educational activities funded by our two fees, which ensure our compliance with the stormwater permit to prevent pollution to our creeks and bay and maintain our storm drain system. As already stated, no increase in the ninety-two fees are permitted. And while the clean water fee does allow for an annual increase, staff is not recommending any increase to the clean water fee for twenty-one, twenty-two. While expenses have gone up beyond, above the revenues, there is an eligible balance in the Environmental Management Clean Creeks Special Revenue Fund, Fund Two Thirty, to cover the difference. The current balance of this fund accumulated as the city transitioned from storm drain maintenance costs being funded by the general fund to being funded by the clean water fee, as well as lower expenditures resulting from COVID. As it is not intended for this fund to carry a significant balance, the use of this balance to pay for expenses that have exceeded revenues is appropriate. Expenses are forecasted to continue to exceed revenues. And if this occurs this time next year or the year after that, we may recommend an increase to the clean water fee up to the three percent CPI limit as is allowed. The annual budget for Stormwater Pollution Prevention and Storm Drainage Infrastructure Program includes money for several rainwater capture rebates and a cost share program for low-income residents. The rebate programs each have a first-gum, first-served maximum budget of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. That could mean, for example, rebates up for up to thirty-seven projects that incorporated both a rain garden and a rain barrel and fourteen driveway projects. Participation in the rebate programs has not been as high as we would like despite outreach through Valley Water and the Climate Victory Gardens program. Palo Alto, which has similar programs to ours, also reports low participation for these types of projects. We will increase promotion of both these programs. Regarding permeable pavement installation, we are recommending that the permeable pavement rebate be increased from nine hundred dollars to an eighteen hundred dollar maximum, which will accommodate larger pavement projects. Participation in Palo Alto's programs and feedback from a pavement installer suggests that an increase to the maximum might help. Increasing the maximum to eighteen hundred dollars would allow rebates for at least seven projects at the maximum amount. The cost share program is available to low-income property owners. One hundred people have already qualified for this and now see a reduced fee on their property tax bills. But more residents are likely eligible to receive the free reduction. So we will make a renewed effort to reach those who may qualify. We will be bumping up outreach to increase participation in all these programs. The Nonpoint Source Program and Storm Drain Maintenance revenues and expenses are annually audited during the regular external audit. Additionally, we have been working with finance staff to establish a new agreed-upon procedures AUP audit so that a full calendar year of expenses and revenues will be audited prior to asking council to renew the fees each year. The twenty-twenty audit has not been completed yet. So both twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one are expected to be reviewed by the audit committee before we appear at council in twenty-twenty-two for the next renewal cycle. To conclude, here are the recommended actions for tonight, which are to renew both fees at no increase and to adjust the maximum on the pervious pavement rebate. This concludes the presentation. I am happy to answer any questions that council or the public may have.
Thank you very much, Ursula. And I will bring this to council. And I'd like to just confirm quickly with Director Lee that that concludes all the presentation material for this item. Okay, very good.
Yes, it does.
Excellent. Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised.
Yes, a clarification question that I forgot to ask. What does it mean previous pavement project?
Oh, pervious.
Is it to redo it or?
Pervious, so it's a type of pavement that allows water to soak through it instead of running off of it.
Got it. The materials that use, that's going to environmental friendly, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. I don't see other hands raised here. And so I'll go ahead and bring this to our members of the public. I don't see this as being, and there are no hands raised. I don't see this as being controversial, seeing as to how essentially the ask is to not increase and to increase the threshold, you know, under which we can give back money to our, our public. So it seems like a pretty, pretty good presentation. I also commend you for your, for, for your, for your presentation. It is really thoughtfully selected in terms of the page size to occupy the entirety of an aspect ratio of a television screen. So I commend you for that. I would even say maybe outreach to your colleagues to make that template Cupertino standard for presentations. It's good for the real estate and good for the eye of the public. I don't see any hands from council. And so at this point, what I'm going to do is to request that we move the recommended action. And those relate to resolutions twenty-one dash oh-four-oh, twenty-one dash oh-four-one. And third, to have the increase to an allowable rebate amount for installation of pervious pavement, pavement projects at single-family residences and duplexes from three dollars per square foot with a nine hundred dollar maximum to three dollars per square foot with a maximum of eighteen hundred dollars. And so would anyone care to move the recommended action? Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised, followed by Councilmember Moore.
So moved.
Councilmember Moore?
Second.
Okay, I don't see further hands raised for this item. And so Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. And we are on to ordinances and action items. And I should clarify, these are ordinances under first impression. And so, or at least under first reading potentially, and action items. Here, we don't actually have a first reading of an ordinance, but we do have, under item number seventeen, the subject which is considering adopting a position on Senate Bill six-twelve concerning electrical corporations and other load-serving entities. And Senate Bill seven ninety-two regarding sales and use taxes for retailers reporting. And then Senate Bill seven eighty regarding local finance, public investment authorities. And so Madam City Manager, would you like to introduce the staffer who is providing our presentation for item number seventeen?
Sure, I will hand it off to Ms. Katie Nemora, Assistant to the City Manager. And I think co-presenting will be Mr. Casey Elliott from Townsend.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I will be handing off the presentation to our legislative consultant, Casey Elliott with Townsend Public Affairs.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Casey Elliott, State Capitol Director with Townsend Public Affairs. I've got a PowerPoint here that I'm going to run through really quick to provide some information on these, on these measures. So hopefully this will go through. All right. All right, is everyone able to see the screen okay?
Yes, for a moment we were able to see the full screen, in fact, yeah.
Okay, hold on one second. There we go. Sorry about that. Is that better there?
Yep, that's there.
So just by, by way of brief background, in, in early February, the council approved legislative platform in this platform.
Sorry to interrupt you, Casey.
The slide is like cut in half, unfortunately.
Right. So as Madam City Manager points out, we're seeing, that's probably better.
They maybe want to keep it on this format, yeah.
Okay, I will, I will move back to this one. Sorry about that. So, oh, as I was mentioning, the legislative platform has been approved. That was done in February. And the legislative platform is then used, among other things, by the Legislative Review Committee to, to consider positions on behalf of the city. That, that document you'll recall did have support and opposition positions. Additionally, it does have cases where there was a monitor recommendation or other recommendations for bills that need to be referred to council. So the measures, two of them that are here before you that I'll speak about just momentarily, fall into that latter category where they either have a... um, uh, fall into that latter category where they either have a, a monitor position um, or, or otherwise require council action. And then one measure, um, there wasn't consensus and hence it's being referred to the full council here. Um, really briefly, um, I'll give you a quick overview of the three bills in question. Um, and then happy to answer any questions on any of the measures at the end. Uh, the first bill is Senate Bill 612 by Assembly Member Portantino. Um, this, uh, relates to, um, uh, community choice aggregate, um, and the procurement of legacy resources, legacy renewable resources. So essentially, this bill would require the PUC to require, um, investor-owned utilities to offer the community choice aggregators, um, and, and other service providers an allocation of products that are already paid through, um, by CCA exit fees. So under, uh, under currently, when a portion of, um, an IOU's membership goes to a CCA, an exit fee is paid, um, for those legacy resources that were procured on their behalf. Uh, however, in making that exit payment, the members of the CCA do not actually benefit from any of those resources that are paid through, through this exit fee. So 612 would modify that law to say that if the, uh, if the exit fee is paid, then those CCAs should be able to acquire a portion of those legacy resources, those renewable resources that they're already paying for. Under current, the way it is currently structured, um, the CCA still has those requirements for renewable energy resources. So they have to go out and procure them again. So you're essentially doubling up. Um, SB 612, uh, actually as of earlier this evening, um, was approved off the Senate floor. Um, so that measure has passed the Senate. It's on to the Assembly where it will be considered, uh, in policy committee, um, in the next six weeks or so. Um, the bill itself is, um, is supported by a number of, of entities. By CalCCA, it's the statewide association for community choice aggregators, uh, as well as a number of, of cities that have CCAs. I've included a, a sampling, um, this is not a, this is not a complete list, uh, but just a sampling of some of the cities. And the, the supporters generally feel that this will provide them an equal and access benefit uh, to resources that they're already paying for through these exit fees. Uh, the opposition to this measure comes, uh, from the IOUs from PG&E, so Cal Edison, uh, as well as TURN. Uh, their issues with the bill is that there are, uh, there have been PUC proceedings, um, in this area. Um, there have been working groups in this area, and they feel that it goes outside of those established, uh, working groups and, and, uh, proceedings that are going on by the PUC. Um, I should note, um, as far as CCA goes, um, I believe it's approximately 97% of the city, um, residents are, are members of the CCA. So obviously, this is, uh, where, why, why the bill is being presented. Um, as noted, the, the Legislative Review Committee did not re-reach a consensus position on this measure. They did request that it be, um, forwarded over to the council. And that's why the measure is before you. The next bill, um, I'd like to briefly speak about is Assembly Bill 792 by Senator Glazer. This bill would require a retailer who transacts more than $1 million uh, in business online to provide, uh, information to FTV with their annual tax filings um, related to their gross receipts and the sale of their goods and where they were shipped to. Um, the retailers that do not provide this information would be faced with a, would be, would be faced with a fine. Um, while this measure is a data reporting bill for realtors, this, uh, kind of gets into the broader conversation of sales tax allocation. Um, the Senator Senator Glazer from the East Bay, you, you may recall it several years ago, a couple of years ago, he, uh, he introduced a constitutional amendment that would have moved California from a, uh, an origin, um, sourced, uh, sales tax system that we're under now to a destination-based sales tax system. So, uh, where, where the sales tax would be allocated to where the products are delivered as opposed to, um, where they're under current law. This measure, um, is currently on the Senate floor. Um, it has moved through, uh, the Governance and Finance Committee, as well as the Appropriations Committee. Um, the, the supporters of this measure, which include the League of Cities and, and a handful of cities, um, in, in, provide that this is a transparency bill that would show, um, how various property, or excuse me, how sales taxes are allocated um, across different jurisdictions, um, based on, on where products are stored or shipped from as opposed to where they are delivered to. Um, opposition from this bill, uh, includes the Retailers Association, uh, the cities of Fresno, cities of Paris. Uh, the Retailers Association, I should note, their, their opposition is distinctly different from the cities, the two cities that are mentioned. Uh, obviously, the, uh, additional work that would be, um, required of their members um, to report with their tax, their taxes, as well as the fee that they could be subject to is the basis of their opposition. Fresno and Paris are, uh, more along the lines of the broader sales tax conversation. Um, the, the city's legislative platform, um, has a monitor, uh, recommendation in this, in this area of, uh, of sales tax. So when presented to the, the Legislative Review Committee, they recommended this, uh, bill to council with an, uh, recommended opposed position on the measure. And then the last of the three bills, um, is Senate Bill 780 by Senator Cortezzi. Um, this bill would make some modifications to, um, current laws governing, uh, enhanced infrastructure financing districts, EIFDs, and community revitalization investment authorities, uh, CRIAs. Uh, both of those were economic development tools that were created, um, created or, or significantly expanded within the wake of the dissolution of redevelopment. Um, while those tools, the EIFDs and the CRIAs, were intended to help create additional funding for economic development and, uh, affordable housing, they haven't been as widely used as, as RDA. Um, in part, uh, because of the process for establishing these entities can be, can be pretty cumbersome and, um, and, and pretty bureaucratic. So this bill is just making some, some modifications and cleanup to make them a little bit easier to establish. The bill does not get into details about, uh, additional tax increment, for example, from education or, uh, anything of kind of a larger, um, economic development tools within these. It just deals with, uh, voting membership, uh, public disclosure, and posting requirements on, on some of the amendments and plans and those things. Um, this measure has passed the, uh, out of the Senate already unanimously. It went out on consent, um, no opposition within the, uh, within the Senate. Uh, supporters of the, of the bill include a, a, a number of associations, including the League of Cities, um, the Association for Local Economic Development, Business Properties Association. Uh, again, under the, under the guise that this, uh, may make these tools more, uh, uh, appealing to local governments to establish, may make them, um, more, more useful and, and then result in more economic development. Uh, as I noted, there is no official opposition to Senate Bill 780. Um, the Legislative Review Committee, when they considered this bill, uh, did refer to council with recommendation for a support position. Um, so in conclusion, the, the staff recommendations, which, um, are before you, are to adopt a support position for Senate Bill 612, a, uh, an opposed position for Senate Bill 792, and a support position for Senate Bill 780, as well as to authorize the mayor to, uh, draft letters and send those over to the legislature. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions on any of these measures.
Great, thank you very much, Casey, and, um, good to have you back. Um, I have a question on the last two. So SB 792 and SB 780, they were referred to the full council from LRC. But it sounds like LRC did not have any kind of disagreement as to the recommended action. Uh, i-is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Those two measures were referred to council, uh, just because of the language that was within the platform has a, uh, monitor recommendation, has a monitor, um, action within these areas just because bills can kind of go in ways that would be beneficial to the city or could go in ways that would be harmful for the city. So, no, there was agreement amongst the LRC, but just due to the, the drafting and the language within the platform, they needed to come to council for approval of those positions.
Okay, because the language within the platform could allow the, the proposed language to change? Is that, is that the consideration? Because?
I can try to clarify. So the, the fact is, in the platform, when it comes to, for example, sales tax or sales tax allocations, it, uh, states that monitor these issues. It doesn't say support, and it doesn't say oppose bills that are pertaining to these issues. So because it's not clearly defined in the platform, which position is appropriate, uh, it needs to come to the full.
I see, I see. Okay. So they're, they're referencing because they're guiding principles, so to speak, uh, as written and, and, uh, uh, as I guess taken as direction from council. Basically, don't really put them in one camp or the other, but they do have, uh, a tendency on these two. Okay, and, and so for the, the first one, um, six something, 612, um, there, there seemed to be a split in our LRC. And could you elaborate upon the reason for, uh, the different, um, perspectives on whether to support or oppose?
Sure, um, and, and obviously would, um, if, if the members of the LRC would, would wish to, I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn, so please, if I, if I say something that characterizes this conversation, please, please let me know. Um, I think generally the, uh, the area of, uh, the support position was based on the idea that, uh, the, the residents of Cupertino, the majority of which fall under a CCA, um, may, will derive a benefit from having these, uh, legacy resources and, and coming to the CCA members and therefore would be less of a need to, uh, purchase those renewable resources on, on the secondary market or other contracts, so could result in a cost savings. Uh, I think the concern on the other end was that there was an ongoing, um, uh, proceeding that's been occurring at the PUC. The PUC does have, has had a, a working group established to look at this issue. And the legislation itself only reflects a portion of the recommendations uh, that came out of that working group. Um, so, so that's generally where, where the conflicts came on those two positions.
I see. Okay, thank you very much. There are hands raised from councilmembers Moore and Willie and Vice Mayor Chow. And so, Councilmember Moore, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Paul. I just want to state that I was in support of, um, SB 612, and I still am. And I appreciate in the staff report, uh, that they state that 97.4% of Cupertino uh, participates in Silicon Valley clean energy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Uh, the next hand is raised from Councilmember Willie. You have the floor.
Yeah, um, Elliot, maybe you can put back the slide that had, uh, 792 on it. The, uh, opposition and, uh, support. I have a question on that. So, um, the question that I've got on this, you know, if we're talking about where to tax, um, the origin or the destination, and, you know, your position or your, your thinking is, is a recommendation to oppose. And so when I look at the opposition, and I see the opposition is the Retailers Association, I'm not quite sure, but City of Fresno, City of Paris, that maybe it tends to make a little sense to me, but tell me if I'm wrong. I mean, in Cupertino, in fact, all of the Bay Area, we've got companies that are producing all kinds of stuff. And so, you know, Apple being in, in our area, uh, we're collecting tax on what they're shipping out. And if that tends to make sense, Fresno is agricultural. And so they don't really have, um, uh, products that are being shipped individually to destinations where it would be taxed. I mean, the truckloads of, of agricultural produce are going to a, uh, a processing plant. And so, I mean, uh, uh, two points of reference, Fresno and Paris, doesn't seem like enough when you have all the Central Valley and, uh, stuff. But am I correct or am I confusing things that their opposition really wouldn't apply to our situation or the majority of Silicon Valley, which we would be representing? And so, um, then if that's all correct, it seems like we should be kind of supportive of, uh, 792 rather than in opposition of 792. Does that make sense? I mean, if you could help me to understand that.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a good question. Um, my understanding from the City of Fresno and the City of Paris is that it actually would be more akin to Cupertino, uh, except instead of having the companies there, they have, uh, uh, distribution facilities, for example, for Amazon or other large retailers. So when those purchases are made for companies that don't necessarily have a headquarters or another nexus within California, those distribution centers can serve as the origin point. So for many cities that have, for example, a large Amazon distribution center or a IKEA distribution center, other things, they would, they would receive the sales tax, tax benefit, um, from those facilities. So my understanding from, uh, Fresno and Paris, I, I know that also, um, I haven't seen them officially in support when the most recent analysis came out, but similar to like the City of Ontario and other areas in the inland empire that tend to serve as, uh, as locations for distribution facilities.
Okay, I, I'm not sure that totally clarifies it, but, you know, I, I can kind of grasp that, that they do have some, uh, origin fees coming into them. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Vice Mayor Chow, you have the floor. And I see Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is lowered. Your microphone's on. Okay.
Okay, so I have, I support the third bill by Cortezzi, but I have concerns on the first and the second. So the first one, um, here is the opposition, they say, so there is already a commission that's working on this issue among others. And the commission, so this bill interferes and undermines an ongoing CPUC proceeding, conflict with and leaves out key provisions of an existing working group joint proposal from CPUC proceeding, attempts to reopen issues that have already been decided by CPUC. And they do not believe the legislature should take actions to overturn a CPUC decision. And this bill seeks to require CPUC to adopt the preferred policy outcomes of one stakeholder group in resolving a complex set of issues. So I'm concerned about this, um, of opposition opinions because I don't understand enough about this issue. But it seems like there is a working group that's already working on some complex issue for a while. And some people, one group doesn't like the way it's going. They went to the legislators, tried to interfere and proposed this bill. Whether maybe yes, this, this proposal likely benefit Cupertino residents directly, I don't know. But what other implications? It may benefit on one area, maybe the consequences would make us pay more on other areas. I don't know. So I feel like I cannot take a position on something that seems complex and have been working for a while. So I couldn't say I could support the bill. Yeah, and then another thing is the, the other bill. Um, as mentioned, the, the other bill is a transparency bill. It really, I think it's, it, I think our concern is eventually the information disclosed in this bill on where the products are being sold to will be used to change how we charge, how, which city get the sales tax. As a result, yes, Cupertino will lose our tax because we get a big portion from Apple sells their product elsewhere. And since we are destination, we are the source, we get the sales tax. I understand as Cupertino City Council member, I should oppose this kind of tax, um, change, this kind of modification in how, um, we charge, who, which city gets those tax. However, as a state, I think this is moving in the right direction. It, sales tax should be going to the destination cities, not who, whichever city. not who, whichever city that originated, which tends to be concentrated in big warehouses. It's not fair. So even though, yeah, this, again, I'm torn. This might hurt Cupertino down the line, not this particular bill. This is transparency bill only. It only requires disclosure of information. But it's possible the next bill might hurt Cupertino. But on the other hand, thinking of the state as a whole, the entire thing, infrastructure as a whole, this is move in the right direction. So I'm not sure I can take a position on this. Um, yeah, so.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow, uh, for sharing those thoughts and concerns with us at this point. I am going to go over to our members of the public. We have two hands raised. We have Bina Chang and Jennifer Griffin, as well as Davina Flemings and Mel Charles of SVCE. Uh, and so I will remind our public, you'll have three minutes to speak. And once Bina, uh, concludes, uh, the comments, you'll need to have your hands up in order to be called. Welcome, Bina. And I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name.
Hi, thank you so much, council. I yield my time to Mel Charles from SVCE. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, and so our remaining, uh, hands are from Jennifer Griffin, Davina Flemings, and Mel Charles. Jennifer, you're next. Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Uh, just to shout out to Deb, thanks so much for all your hard work. Um, this one, uh, bill six twelve by Mr. Porten, Senator Portantino. You know, it's, it's one of those bills that are kind of, it sound, I don't know. It, uh, my problem with it was, I feel like, I'm, I'm echoing Vice Mayor Chow a little bit in that I feel like they are essentially messing with PUC decisions. I understand that we have the aggregate, I'm sorry, I had the wrong word, but, uh, the alternative, um, utilities that we have been using in the city. But I do not think that people fully understand that the, there are leases that go back seventy-five years. When you have legacy, that means you're going back to the telephone poles that are maintained by PG&E and AT&amp;T. Essentially, you're going back seventy-five years. And the new, the aggregators are sub, are leasing from, I'm assuming it's PG&E. But you still have to maintain those telephone poles. And those are a bi-reciprocal agreement between PG&E and AT&amp;T that whoever gets, if the poles go down, one or two of those agencies go back to fix them. And that is in place for seventy-five years. And you, there are decisions made by the PUC that go back that far. And it's not a trivial matter. I mean, we have a, yes, the aggregators, they are subleasing space on the telephone poles, as, as I understand it. But I have, my main issue is that I feel like this is trivializing the agreements that go back, uh, to the point where we have standing physical facilities, which are the telephone poles. They have to be maintained and we can't treat that as a trivial matter. So the part of this is that there are decisions made by the PUC, um, that, that I feel like we, maybe we need to renegotiate them. But I feel like this bill is trivializing that. That, that's just my personal feeling. But the other one, seven ninety-two, I, I'm, I think, I'm hoping that we can help Apple so that we maintain the sales tax. But that one seems to be a, a kettle of fish. I, I'm really kind of confused about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Davina Flemings. Welcome, Davina. Davina, you'll need to unmute yourself to be heard. All right, um, I will move on to Mel Charles. Mel, uh, you did have a previous speaker cede your time over. In order to consolidate, I do take a minute, oh, Davina is.
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, I, thank you. I apologize for the, uh, delay in unmuting myself.
No worries. Welcome.
Good evening, um, Mayor Paul and, uh, council members. Uh, my name is Davina Flemings and I, um, am speaking on behalf of PG&E. Uh, we oppose SB six one two, which undermines the outcome of an extensive stakeholder process at the PUC, um, and harms customers and disrupts the current portfolio optimization and portfolio planning process. As mentioned, uh, previously, the PUC resolved this issue of portfolio optimization allocation as included in SB six one two through the power, charge indifference adjustment phase in group three. The decision is based on a well-developed record, balances stakeholder interests, and meets statutory requirements. If SB six one two is passed, the legislature would simply displace the judgment of the PUC and undermine this extensive process with detrimental outcomes. Um, the bill appears to only reflect the interest of its sponsors, California Community Choice Association, and does not consider the undue impacts it would have on other stakeholders, including millions of others IOU utility customers in this complex issue. It would also cause broad harm to PG&E bundle customers and may have broader impacts on the resource adequacy markets and overall system reliability. Um, the proposed legislation also allows the CCAs to simply check the utilities portfolios in a way that presents customer, uh, consumer protection concerns. Uh, CCAs could claim, uh, greenhouse gas-free attribute, attributes, even though their customers benefit equally from GHG emitting Energy. Um, allowing the CCAs to pick and choose what to show on their emissions disclosures while continuing to receive the energy revenue benefits from the whole portfolio, including gas, is illogical and misleading to customers and local decisions makers presenting consumer protection concerns. Um, PG&E is committed to providing customers with safe, reliable, and affordable energy as well as the state's ambitious carbon reduction goals. But we, um, continue to oppose this bill and we ask that you, uh, take a vote to oppose it. I also have, uh, Erica Brown on the line to answer any, um, any questions that may, uh, the committee may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Davina. And we'll go on to Mel Charles of SVCE. Mel, um, someone else has ceded time to you as well, and so we'll combine that. And, uh, in order to increase your time allocation, I'll take a minute off of the combined time. And so you'll have five minutes for your comments. Welcome, Mel.
Can you hear me okay now?
We can hear you, uh, just fine.
Okay, great. I have a few slides that'll go through very quickly. And so I'll start by saying, um, I am Melissa Charles, Director of Policy at Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And we are asking for your support on SB six twelve. Next slide, please. So, uh, we talked about the power charge indifference adjustment, and it's an exit fee that is charged to CCA customers for legacy resources procured on their behalf before they left the utility to go to the CCA. Moving on to the next slide. Um, one thing, just as background you should know, is that the exit fee has increased exponentially over the years. It is now over nine hundred percent of what it was in twenty-fourteen. And those costs are soldier, soldier, shoulder, and sorry, by, uh, City of Cupertino customers and CCA customers throughout California. And this does raise, uh, affordability problem for CCA customers. And just to be clear, we're not against, um, uh, our customers paying those fees. We do have concerns with not having access to the benefits of the resources that were procured on their behalf. Next slide, please. And so I hope this slide alleviates some of the concerns. Um, others have mentioned, uh, the CPC process. Uh, the CPC did go through an extensive working group process, as PG&E, uh, stated. Um, I won't go through this entire slide in the timeline, but there was a consensus solution that was formed between Southern California Edison, Cal CCA, and Commercial Energy, which is a direct access provider. And the, um, Cal CCA, the CCA Trade Association, did try to reach out to the CPC in terms of trying to find a resolution because that, um, consensus solution was at the PUC for, um, over a year. And so we did try to work with the PUC beforehand, and we did work within the proceedings when the decision came out, um, earlier, um, a couple of months ago. Um, and so, you know, we're not trying to undermine the process, but we weren't happy that the consensus solution was not adopted. Elements of it were, but not all of it were. And all we're asking for is equitable, um, access to those benefits while also paying for those costs. So what SB six twelve does is, next slide, please, is it does provide, uh, require the CPC to provide fair and equal access to the benefit and reduce those costs to CCA customers so that all customers have equal rights to buy legacy resources and CCA customers aren't shoulder, shouldering, shouldering the burden of, um, additional costs of buying those resources twice. Um, and it also requires the CPC to recognize the value of greenhouse gas-free energy. And I think that's it. I want to leave time. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take them, but once again, we do ask for your support. And again, it's not about undermining the CPC process. We work within the CPC process. But it is also making sure that both CCA and IOU customers have equal access to those benefits as well. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mel. I do have a question with some of your remaining time. Uh, the, the phraseology legacy resources, what would be an example of that? Um, that, that existing customer could partake in if, if six twelve is passed?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So it could be, it could be any kind of electricity. So when we talk about resource benefits, it's, uh, certain benefits related, it can be related to reliability. So if it's electricity that is purchased that also has certain, what we call attributes, that can contribute to reliability, those benefits then can be allocated back to CCAs and help reduce the cost of, um, for CCAs. Um, similarly, if you're talking about renewable energy, like solar, there are certain attributes and benefits that come with that. So yes, solar comes with costs. You're purchasing those costs. You pay for those costs, but you also get benefits for that solar as well.
I see. And presumably those cost savings are passed on to the customers. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's absolutely correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks very much. Um, that is our last speaker on this item. I'll bring it back to council. Uh, before we deliberate, I'd like to ask for a motion for the purposes of motivating our discussion here. Would anyone like to move the staff recommendation? Um, and, uh, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up. To, to remind everyone, the staff recommendation as a default is a support position on six twelve, uh, an opposed position on seven ninety-two, and a support position on seven eighty. Uh, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, I move that we, um, follow the recommended action in the staff report and authorize the mayor to send position letter, letters to the state legislature.
Great. Thank you for catching that part of it as well. Um, Councilmember White, did you want to second Councilmember Moore's motion?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, great. And so for the purposes of our discussion, we do have the motion and second motions on the table with the recommended action from the staff report. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised first.
Uh, can I, I hope that we can vote on them separately because I, I support the third bill, but the first two I'm planning to abstain.
Okay. Let me ask the movement, as well as the secondor. Councilmember Moore, would you be willing to break out your motion into four separate motions? Um, to, uh, adopt prospectively the, uh, positions as recommended by staff on the three, uh, bills, as well as to authorize, uh, me to send positions uh, to the state legislator in the form of letters?
Uh, yes. Okay, so that our, our, our first, um, motion and vote will be that we adopt a support position on SB six twelve, the second to adopt an opposed position on SB seven ninety-two, third, adopt a support position on SB seven eighty. And for each one, uh, authorize the mayor to send the position letters to the state legislature.
That's right, for each and every. Um, okay, Councilmember Wei, will you accept that as a modification to the original motion as the secondor?
Yes, I do.
Okay, very good. So now we have, uh, four motions on the table. Uh, let's go ahead and, uh, for the purposes of discussion, look at the first motion regarding a support position on SB six twelve. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to speak to that item?
Um, no, I think I said what I need to say.
Oh, uh, uh, okay. Um, I don't see any other hands raised. And so I'll go ahead and ask for a vote on this first motion. Uh, a- and again, on the table, uh, that we'll, we'll be voting on is the adoption of a support position on SB six twelve. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on this motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
I'll abstain because I don't think there is enough information for me to make decision. Thank you.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with Chow abstaining.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Our next motion is an opposed position on SB seven ninety-two. Would anyone like to speak on this motion on the table? Seeing no hands raised, I would like to ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote on the motion on the table, which again is an opposed position on SB seven ninety-two.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Um, I'll abstain, um, because I think this bill is a move in the right, right direction, but I am concerned that the impact on Cupertino eventually, um, will follow up bill. So I'll abstain on this. Thank you.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with Chow abstaining.
Okay, and now for the third motion on the table, and that is adopting a support position on SB seven eighty. I don't see any hands raised, and so I will ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote on the support position on SB seven eighty?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And now finally, we have the last motion to authorize, uh, me as mayor to send position letters to the state legislature on the aforementioned motions uh, that we have just voted upon. And Madam City Clerk, uh, seeing no hands raised on this item either, please conduct a roll call vote on this motion.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, uh, we are on to item number eighteen on our agenda. The subject is consideration of one, authorization of an award of a construction contract for privacy fencing. Two, a request to increase the Regnar Creek Trail Privacy Fencing Project Budget Allocation. Three, a request to increase the budget allocation for Regnar Creek Trail Project Contingency. Four, a request to increase the budget allocation for Regnar Creek Trail and Regnar Creek Fencing Design Services. And five, a request to execute a first amendment to the master agreement between the city and CSG Consultants Incorporated to increase the agreement amount. Madam City Manager, would you like to introduce the staff that will be providing the presentation for item number eighteen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going back to, uh, Director of Public Works, Roger Lee.
Great, welcome back.
It's good to be back. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. This agenda item is for the Regnar Creek Trail Project. In November of last year, council authorized the trail project to proceed prior to going out to bid and to better accommodate residents choosing concrete fence and also receive more competitive bids. Staff broke the project into two, the trail project and the privacy fence project. Proposals were received last January. Nine bids were received for the trail project, and unfortunately, no bids were received for the privacy fence project. The bid for the trail work was favorable and was awarded this last February with construction going on now. For the privacy fence work, when no bids are received for a project, the public contract code allows proposals to be solicited. To this end, six different contractors were contacted. Several proposals were received, and we are asking council to consider several actions that will get the privacy fence project started. On the next two slides, all items requesting your consideration are summarized, and I will describe each item's purpose. The first item will provide authorization to award the project to the lowest responsive bidder, which is California Commercial Fence Company. The authorized amount includes the contract amount plus contingency. This authorization will allow the fence work project to start. The second item will increase pardon, will increase the budget allocation for the fence work so that the contract award is funded. And the third item will increase the budget allocation for the trail project contingency in the, uh, in the event unforeseen conditions occur while completing the trail work. The fourth action is recommended to increase the budget allocation for both the trail and the fence project design services. This action will facilitate additional design services for both projects that were not foreseen. And lastly, the fifth is to amend the master agreement to allow for an increase of the agreement amount for construction management services to complete all work. At the end of the presentation, and to help facilitate any actions you take, this information is repeated and the exact dollar amounts as detailed in the staff report will be shown. For the sake of brevity, I will detail the two primary items on the next slide. And after the presentation, myself and others that are even more familiar with this project than I am, will answer any questions that you have. Two main items that are requiring additional allocations are shown here. The trail project has a low contingency amount, and materials needed to construct the fence project have increased substantially. The next slide provides detail on the initial, on the additional amount of contingency that is needed for the trail project. And the slide after that will list the reasons why fencing materials have become so much more expensive. However, if you have been following local or regional news, this will not be new news to you. First, the item on trail contingency. Despite a favorable bid and award for the trail work, the project currently does not have enough funds available as a contingency. Work adjacent to the creek and within the creek channel should have a project contingency closer to twenty percent. The current contingency is low, at below ten percent, and an additional one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars is being requested. Now, dollars earmarked for this are for items of work not anticipated, and it is not our goal to use current amount in contingency, or for that matter, the one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, but rather return these funds back to the capital reserve account upon completion of the project. However, if unforeseen issues do come up that exceed the, the current contingency, we would need to come back to council as soon as possible to get the authority. This would take time and would likely delay the work and cause the city to be responsible for additional costs regarding the fence work. For this slide, the reason that an additional allocation is needed, uh, for the fencing work is listed. Each are related to the impacts created by COVID and how these impacts have rippled through the economy with pronounced effect on lumber crisis. Lumber has increased nearly five times, and complementary materials such as precast concrete have increased substantially as well. With wood fences, sixty-seven percent of the project, and precast concrete up to thirty percent of the project, this is why additional dollars are needed. And this next slide shows where these costs are at. As noted on, on the next to the last row of this table, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is currently funded for fence work. The proposed contract amount on the top row is, is funded for fence work. Proposed, I'm sorry, pardon me. The proposed contract amount on the top rows is the best price we could negotiate after working with six contractors. That's the top row. And after adding other costs and backing out the current funding, one million, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight eighty-three additional dollars are needed. The minor offset to these costs are on the next slide regarding reimbursement of fencing costs. Thirteen residents have indicated a desire to have their fences replaced with concrete. Total, this would amount to just over one thousand feet of fencing. Residents that select concrete have been asked to provide a reimbursement to the city capped at one hundred and seventy dollars per foot. The second row on this table shows the various reimbursement amounts that the city would receive from these residents. The average reimbursement cost to the resident, which is the last row of the table, is based on an average, uh, eighty-foot parcel width. Reimbursements for concrete fencing are equitable because residents selecting concrete are receiving a superior lifetime fence. To date, only one resident has entered into a reimbursement agreement with the city, and staff is not making a recommendation on the reimbursement amount, but is looking for your input. Current trail construction is progressing on schedule. If all recommended actions are authorized, this evening, fence work will start on fences opposite the trail first and will then resume on fences adjacent to the trail once all of the trail work is complete. And we will not open the trail until all fence work is complete. On this slide, I'm just showing a few pictures of the trail work that is progressing. This is the access ramp, um, near Wilson Park, so this would be very, um, very visible from the park. The north ramp is closest to the park, and that's the construction of the new ramp. And the south ramp is the existing ramp that is being demolished in the back though. So as I mentioned, here are the, uh, the two slides showing the requested council actions that are directly from the staff report. And with that, I end the presentation and open up to questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Lee, and I don't see any hands so far from our council. Councilmember Wei, you up before?
Um, yes, I have a couple of questions. Sorry, I, I didn't, you know, I studied this more. I didn't ask at the agenda review, um, um, session, so, um, so I'm gonna ask it now. First question is, I get it, uh, the pre-con quiz, we get some rebate, but it's reimbursement for the resident, it's really minimal, like thirteen thousand. We're looking at one point five million, one point one million project, one point nine million project, actually. Well, with the twenty percent, uh, uh, contingency fund. It's, it's horrendous. So I have two questions for you. Didn't we just finish, uh, the, the Linda Vista Trail? They have some new fences too. How come those fences didn't come up with this outrageous price? That's my first question. My second question is, I study a little bit more on the slide that, um, that, uh, City Manager Deb sent me about, you know, uh, seven inch and eight inch fences. And I found out that there are a few residents who picked the seven or eight inch fences plus the, uh, where's my sheet, plus the, um, plus the mass loading vinyl added to it. If a resident picked a seven inch wood plus the mass loaded vinyl, their per square footage is three forty-four. If they picked the eight inch wood plus the mass loaded vinyl, their cost is three fifty-four. So three forty-four, three fifty-four, where the pre-conquest is four thirty-one. So to ask the pre-concrete to rebate one seventy per square footage because they, they get a better, you know, material, well, these, um, residents also charge up to three forty-four and three fifty-five. And their difference with the precast concrete is about seventy dollars. So I'm just saying that it's, you know, it would be very hard for us to tell the pre-concretes that, hey, you have to pay one seventy per foot because you'll, you know, get a better material, while then with seven, eight wood plus the mass vinyl is three forty-four and three fifty-four. So that was a new number I received. But first, I really like to note on the Linda Vista Trail fence, we just did that. How much tho- those fence cost?
I do not have that bid schedule with me. You know, one, one difference, and we see this in other projects as well, Councilmember Wei, is the, the bidding climate, especially for materials, has really changed. And so Linda Vista Trail project that was, that was bid out, um, you know, last, uh, I think it was, I don't recall when it was, but earlier this year, um, it, it didn't experience the wild increases in prices as we, as we've seen on this particular project. So I think that's number one, and we're, we're enjoying that, those low prices with other projects as well. And, and this one just happened to get caught up in what's going on with the lumber prices. And, you know, and while it was a, an item on that project, it wasn't a dominant, it wasn't a dominant item. Um, it was, it was rather insignificant, um, to the overall project.
Okay. Oh, thanks, Roger. So I just walked the tr- sorry. So I just walked the trail back yesterday. So they had pretty nice new fences, some of them, some of them didn't even pick fence. They just had the old fences. Um, so I'm, I'm just, is it possible we can get to that company and see their bid? I'm just, this bid is just so, I understand, you know, wood had come up five times. It's just so expensive.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I mean, and, and I put it in relative. I mean, I think there were seventeen total homes that fronted Linda Vista Trail. There's, there's eighty-three that front this, this, this trail, so the, the magnitude is quite a bit different.
Well, you would think normally if we get them, give them a bigger project, it's cheaper. Uh, that's just how I see things, right? If you get a big project, you, you get a better discount.
We, we have been beating the bushes, uh, talking to contractors. I mean, to, to arrive at the recommendation we have now, um, you know, we, we've talked to, to six different contractors that, that were interested in talking to us. Many of them aren't. And, um, and got it to where we are this evening. And that, and that was through no small effort to get, to get the price where we are now. So I, I would have, uh, no confidence that going out and talking to other contractors would yield anything different and likely higher than what we have for.
All right. Thank you, Roger.
Yeah, and, and then regarding your other question regarding the mass loaded vinyl, you know, we, you know, early on, when we, when we were putting together the, the, the cost estimates, um, you know, we knew the mass loaded vinyl would be more expensive than a, than a standard seven or eight foot fence because it's really just double, double wood with, with the line, with the membrane sandwiched in between. But it, it was not, it was not estimated to be anywhere as expensive as it is now and largely just driven by that much more wood. It's really two fences in one, and, uh, that just was not anticipated.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Councilmember Moore, you up before?
Uh, well, I, I don't have too much to add, but I, I was reading an article within the past couple of days about, uh, builders, uh, being suggested that they stockpile and, uh, that they stockpile on lumber and steel. And, and I think we recall what happened when everybody ran out and stockpiled on toilet paper last year. Uh, yeah, so, um, I, I can only see the prices getting worse, um, as, as the year progresses. I see that, that Rhoda Frye has, has her hand up from the public. So once, once we're done, I'm really interested to hear what she's got to say about, about the costs. She might have some more input there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Moore, did you want, um, staff to speak to your comment regarding the advisability of, of waiting or?
Um, sure. I'd love, yeah, I, I think it's gonna get worse. I want, I'm wondering if that's what they're seeing as well.
Director Lee, did you have some input on that observation or possibility?
Well, you know, you, you think about waiting, given how expensive things are now. You know, will it be different in a month or two? Bottom line, you're speculating on what's gonna happen. And, you know, with, uh, with President Biden talking about a, a transportation infrastructure bill that's, you know, one point six or so trillion dollars and, and what that will do to, to further, um, increase the prices of things, who knows? Um, I, I, I'm, we're not seeing any indication that, that it's gonna be going lower in the foreseeable future. And in the meantime, you know, we want to get a trail open as well. So here we are.
Okay, thank you, um, Director Lee. Councilmember Wei, did you have a follow-on question? Or do you mind if I go to our members of the public who would like?
Yes, I have a question for the attorney, but I can wait until the comment first.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. So I see three hands that are raised at the moment. They are from Rhoda Frye, Jennifer Sheeran, and Seema Linskog, uh, repeating again for our members of the public, you all have three minutes. By the time Rhoda, uh, finishes speaking, you'll need to have your hand up if you'd like to be heard on this item. Welcome, Rhoda.
Good evening, council members. Um, in the last couple of weeks, lumber has gone down a little bit. I don't know when, um, the bids came in, but I'm just wondering if there's any way, and this is discussed a little bit about hedging our bets, um, somewhat. Because it does, it does seem that things have, you know, what I've seen in the last couple of weeks that things have loosened up a little bit. Um, so that's my comment. The other thing is, is wow, twenty percent contingency seems really high. Um, I don't get it, but, um, main thing is, is, yeah, the, the lumber is, it's crazy volatile. And, um, I know we want to open the trail, but I'm just wondering if we can just wait for things to settle a little bit. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Rhoda. I'll keep your time running for now in case staff wants to speak. And, uh, I'll just remind the members of the public, during the three minutes, you effectively have the floor as well. Um, Director Lee or any member of staff, did you want to speak to, um, Rhoda's comment with regard to the advisability, uh, of waiting, given that lumber prices may have decreased in the, in the immediate past?
Well, and, and that is immediate. I mean, we're, we're probably holding on to a proposal that's a couple of weeks old right now. And it, it is speculation. Um, I mean, with, with this contract, we've been, you know, working with the, uh, with our attorney's office to allow the contractor to purchase the, the wood materials upfront. You know, as soon as they have a notice to proceed, they buy the materials because we,
Okay.
that way, it, if it keeps going up, that, that, that provides the contractor, he has the confidence that at least he has the materials. Um, it, it's all speculation.
So if it has decreased recently and there's that ability to purchase, they would also partake of the benefits of that decrease as well, correct, under what you're describing?
Well, that's right. Or if, or if it were to continue to go up, then we're, we're locked in on the price.
Right, right. Awesome. Got it. Okay, well, thanks very much. Um, we'll go on to Jennifer Sheeran, followed by Seema Linskog, and those are the members of the public with their hands raised. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, can everyone hear me now?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Paul and city council members. Um, I'm asking this evening that you don't increase the budget for the Regnar Creek Trail. It's a very large increase, as, um, Councilman, Councilmember Wei said. And there's other ways, actually, that, that money could be allocated to nearby homeowners for their fencing and for their additional privacy requests. In addition, there's no reason to delay the use of the trail by our residents because of just the fencing. Leaving a functional trail vacant, because there's no reason it won't be functional by the end of this year because of private land improvements, is not a good thing for all of our residents. Um, as you could see in the third line of my chart that I made, the increase would bring the fencing to almost the same cost as the trail, about two million dollars, which is a huge sum. Instead of doing this, it would be much better to keep the current budget and allow the homeowners wishing for new fences or additional privacy mitigation features to draw from a fund by showing receipts and completed work to Public Works or whoever, uh, the appropriate body would be in our, um, in our, um, city. And during a set period of time, such as eighteen months or two years, if we think that the, the wood prices are going to go down. Then homeowners could get the homeowner prices, which they've talked, which I know several homeowners have talked about, instead of the much larger prices that municipalities are usually charged. This would allow the residents nearby to get the new fences and the privacy measures they desire, but not at the extremely heavy price that we would be paying. One last note, please, please, don't delay the trail anymore because of fencing. Um, the project was started in twenty seventeen, which is four years ago. I see all kinds of residents looking at it, hoping that it's gonna open. And then, you know, it's supposed to be open by the end of the year, and now staff wants to push it back another eight months, uh, in August of next year. And that's assuming we want to pay for this two million dollars extra. Um, the fencing doesn't affect the usefulness of the trail. Just let the trail be open and get the fences as they happen. Um, so anyway, I urge you to consider this alternative remedy that would work for everyone, either delaying on the fences or allowing people to purchase their own. Thank you for your consideration and your work on behalf of all Cupertino. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Seema Linskog. Welcome, Seema.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak, um, Mayor Paul and Vice Mayor Chow and, uh, respected council members. Um, I want to reiterate basically what Jennifer said. Um, this proposed increase in cost of fencing would be two and a half times the current fencing cost. And it's, it's getting kinda out of control. This is like two million dollars to do fencing and private, you know, improvements on private land is, is unheard of in any city, uh, in the Bay Area. And, you know, I would argue probably on a broader regional area as well. Um, we really, and I just looked it up actually while you guys were talking, and I found a Bloomberg article that said the analysts in Bloomberg think that the lumber prices will drop to less than half by the end of twenty twenty-one. Um, so I would say either, yeah, let's, let's decouple the trail and the fence for sure. The fencing, there's no reason the trail cannot be open while the fencing is being figured out. But let's either delay the fencing until But let's either delay the fencing until the lumber prices come back down to earth, and as Rhoda pointed out, they're already starting to fall. Um, or let's create a city fund where the residents can draw upon with receipts, with a per resident cap, and they can get fencing much cheaper than the city is able to get apparently, without the, you know, twenty percent contingency fees and, and what have you. It would be a much, much more efficient use of our taxpayer money, um, than, than like this boondoggle of, of, of an expansion of the budget. So I, I urge you to actually, yeah, just separate the two, the two things. Pushing the trail opening to August 2022, when we've been waiting for it for almost five years at this point, um, and it has huge community support, and, you know, people have been waiting for this trail. Um, let's get it done, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Seema. Our, uh, next step is to take it back to council. I, uh, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion and remind council that the default motion is the staff recommendation, uh, which I had read, uh, by way of the subject, um, at the beginning of this item. Would anyone like to move the staff recommendation or any other motion for the purposes of the discussion here? I don't see hands raised here. And so I'll just remind everyone that if we don't have a motion, we, uh, can't, uh, continue the discussion. Uh, I see Councilmember Wei, followed by Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Wei?
So moved, so that we can discuss it.
Okay, Councilmember Wei moves the recommended action on the agenda for purposes of discussion. Councilmember Willie, would you like to second?
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Uh, would anyone like to make commentary first, Councilmember Willie? I see your hand is still raised. Would you like the floor?
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll start and then maybe come back later. So the first question I've got is, you know, I didn't hear any differentiation about DePaul, DePaulma and Lozano. How are those fence, you know, because those are crucial ones that are right up against the fronts of their houses. How are those impacted by these prices?
They were included, that particular work for those homes were included in the trail project, Councilmember Willie. And so they're, they're part of that bid schedule, part of what's already been awarded, that's already locked in and, and scheduled to be done by December.
Great, thank you. So I'll wait for additional comments.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. We have Councilmember Wei.
So thi- these, um, one point nine million, or because with the twenty percent, um, uh, contingency, is for eighty-three homes? If I didn't really, if I read it.
Yeah, and I could, I could bring up, uh, an image that would show you where the homes are at. It, it, it's for a number, it's not all eighty-three elected for, for the fences.
Oh, okay. Uh, just, if it's eighty, I'm just, it's over twenty thousand dollars a home, or twenty-two. I, I get it, it's just, I just, okay, so I would like the city attorney's input on the proposals made by, um, is it Jennifer? Sharon, about, you know, if we get a reimbursement fund, so is that legal? Can the city do that, or what's the?
Yeah, and, and I can, and I can start that. Um, you know, the use of city funds for, um, that, that don't comply to our, um, you know, the use of prevailing wages and other requirements are not allowed. So as, as Jennifer and Seema, uh, described the use of that fund, we would not be able to do that, but Heather, Heather could add to that if she'd like.
Yeah, that's correct, because it's part of the city's public works projects. We have certain state law requirements to provide prevailing wage, um, and have those contractors registered through the Department of Industrial Relations, which is, um, difficult for private parties to comply with, and regardless, they would have to comply with it anyway. So, um, so the, the high cost would still be, even if, um, the private parties were, were using the city's stuff.
Yeah, and a- as a follow-up to the other, there's, out of the eighty-three homes, seventy, um, are, are having fence work done, and that includes the eight on Lozano and DePaulma.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. We next go to Vice Mayor Chow. You have the floor.
So, so right now, the construction project and the fencing projects are separate, right? You are putting them out separately for that.
That is correct.
And we just can, we were discussing the community grant proposal, and so in Cupertino, our grant is, uh, like a gift. We are giving to a nonprofit for a certain program. They promise they will do, um, and then they provide the report after. My understanding in Saratoga, they have a similar community grant program, but their program is by receipt. So the organizations get reimbursement from, apply for reimbursement from the city with the receipt of their expenses. Um, so these are, there is precedence for that. So why doesn't that apply for this case, that the city is providing grant for residents to, um, perform work, then they submit to receipt to get a reimbursement, similar to nonprofits that are doing such thing? Or we can maybe contract with a nonprofit to help distribute the fund. I don't know.
Right. Yeah, I, I know it's rooted in the public, uh, contract code, but Heather would have a better response.
And they, they do construct, uh, do construction on houses too, right? Historic Society use the city fund to do work on the Snyder High Hen- Henm House. And then the West Valley Community Service gets a big grant to do work on their project too, so.
But this is, this is a, this is a public works project and part of that project, I mean, that's the.
On private property. It's not city property. So.
There's not a.
They find either way, right?
The, the, the requirements still apply for private property.
So you mean the West Valley Community Service, when they get grant from the city, they have to hire prevailing wage?
I'm not really, those grants are what they're using with them, so I, I'm not ready to speak about that, but I'm, but for this project, the city could, you know, provide reimbursement, but then the residents would need to show that they had complied with the prevailing wage requirements and all of those.
That's because you are defining this as a city project, but this is in fact fences on private property.
It's still part of the project that was designed by the city and, um, and analyzed for environmental review. So that's my legal recommendation.
You mean because the.
Not, um. The prevailing wage law is not something you want to start, uh, cutting corners on.
I, but this is a project that's not on the city property. Just because we analyze it doesn't make that a city project.
It, it's the use of city funds for a public works project.
But this is not public works project. This is a, you city grant given to cry, and, and just like the grant we are giving to West Valley Community Service. We are giving to Historic Society.
My suggestion is if you wanted more legal advice on this, that, that council continue the item, and my office can provide a memo to council about the requirements of prevailing wage law and how the risks of structuring this in different ways and the options of doing that. Um, so I think, you know, if you, if you would want more legal advice on this issue, I suggest you continue the item, and then I can provide that to you. But at the point, our, you know, our determination is that this is the way to structure this and the way that complies with prevailing wage law. And if you'd like us to consider other alternatives or discuss the risks of doing that for you, we could do that, but I don't think that.
Okay, so could you also include of why this is, is allowed in, for West Valley Community Service or, or Historic Society for constructing project too? And other nonprofits have done this also, right?
Vice Mayor Chow, are you making a substitute motion, uh, asking that we continue this item and directing the city attorney's office to follow up in accordance to what was just described?
Um, yes, okay, I'm making that motion.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Chow makes that substitute motion, uh, asking to continue this item. Um, and Vice Mayor Chow, are you asking to continue to a date certain or to, uh, date simply in the future?
Um, let's bring it back on the fifteenth, where.
Madam Secretary Clerk, do you think that you'll have enough time to conduct that follow-up research in time for the fifteenth?
I, we've alr- we've already been advising about this, um, at, to the city, so I think the issue that, that you need to consider is the impact that this has on the ability of the contractor to maintain their, their bid offer, which I think Director Lee has.
Yeah, I was, yeah, if you don't mind, I'll talk on that point. The, the contractor will not hold his bid, you know, if this goes to the fifteenth, and so it, 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 it could go up, and, um, and it, and it will result in the, in the delay of the project, so those would be the things to consider if you do move on that motion.
And, and if you want, my, you know, my legal opinion now, this is a public works project, the dollars are being spent for, you know, a public works project, and it needs to comply with prevailing wage law, and so that is why the city has structured it this way to ensure that the, this, the city can ensure that the use of its funds, um, complies with all of the requirements for, uh, prevailing wage, um, on public works projects. So that is, that has been our advice to the city on this.
Yeah. Yeah, and this point's come up a number of times as this project's been, been discussed.
I, I have in fact suggested it in the past. I, I was, um, I, I was simply, um, following up on the city attorney's comment that if Vice Mayor Chow wanted to continue the item and ask her office to conduct more research into it, uh, she could do that, but, um, it, it seems that that position has changed upon reflection of the, uh, the contours of the bidding process. But I did ask Vice Mayor Chow if she wanted to make that motion. Vice Mayor Chow, at this point, um, having, uh, made the motion with some clarifications and process, are, are you still wanting to keep that motion in as a, uh, as the motion maker?
Uh, I'd like to hear, let's keep it for now, let's hear from other council members.
Okay, well, I'll need to have a second in order for that to be on the table. Would, would anyone like to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion? Uh, and again, that was to continue this item to the date certain of June fifteenth, such that the city attorney's office, um, and staff, uh, could go back and look into the possibility of, uh, what the members of the public were suggesting, which is to create a fund for reimbursement of, uh, private improvement of fencing. Councilmember Willie, I see your hand raised. Did you want to second the substitute motion?
Uh, my hand was up before that, and, um, I, I appreciate that we want to get a motion out, but on some items, I think we need to have more deliberation before we're saying, oh, I want this as a, uh, a motion. I think it sends the wrong message to the community if we put out a motion before we have answers to our questions.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's do this. Um, I don't have a second for Vice Mayor Chow's motion. Um, and so let's go ahead and take the substitute motion off, uh, seeing as to how no one is seconding. Councilmember Willie, I'll address your point. In order to bring this back procedurally to our council for deliberation, I ask for a motion. And of course, if there is no, uh, motion in substance forthcoming, I, I do ask that we simply place the, uh, default motion on the agenda on the table so that we may, uh, conduct that discussion. So I, I, I understand and appreciate your concerns regarding the optics of some of these, um, you know, procedures. If there's a particular motion on the table that we haven't fully, uh, fleshed out, so to speak, but, but that's simply the procedural, the, simply the procedural requirement to put a motion on the table for the purposes of discussion after we've had our opportunity to ask questions, after the public has had an opportunity to ask questions, so. You know, if we wanted to examine perhaps changing that, uh, procedure, I'd be open to that in the future, but, you know, for now, we have the default motion on the table, and you're free to, uh, discuss, and, you know, as, as we were indicating, put forward a substitute motion, uh, upon the result of that discussion. So Councilmember Willie, you do have your hand raised. Uh, did you want to speak to, uh, the, the motion or other, uh, follow-up questions or comments?
Yeah, follow-up questions, but I will say, you know, so Vice Mayor Chow, after additional deliberations, feels based on additional discussion and stuff, by all means, put that out there, and based on what we're thinking, we might then second it as a replacement motion. Now on to my question. So, you know, I, I'm always wanting to be here listening to the residents, you know, I, I don't feel that, you know, I have a monopoly on, on all the ideas that I could possibly come up with. So the residents have come up with a, a couple other proposals, and, you know, in addition to, uh, the cost of lumber and things of that nature, the thing that I would think is part of their, uh, thinking outside of the box, you know, they may be opening up the trail before the fencing are done, but I have a question about that. I'm thinking that when you're talking about this fence construction, if it's a city project, they're gonna be, uh, well, the contractors would be accessing the fences, especially for concrete, precast concrete that they'll be trucking in and using, I would think, a crane. Would the trail be able to be open before that construction work was done? I mean, would you be able to open and close based on, I, I want to think outside of the box, you know, and, and if you have a good answer for, for what can really, uh, happen after the gates are open, I'd sure like to know that. Thank you.
I mean, yes, I mean, we, we could, we could close the, uh, the trail down to do, do construction and, and open it back up as the schedule allows. So we would just intermittently close it and, and open it, um, for the safety of the users, right? Right now, how it's set is that, uh, you know, they, they wouldn't start erecting the fence until the trail contractor was done, and then fences would go up, and then the trail would be open.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Wei, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So Roger, bear with us because we're trying to get some solutions. So I had this question's twofold. One is, I wasn't in the original project, but original project, you have the environmental impact report, this and that. Is fencing part of the environmental impact report? Or could there be some cities have a trail, they just don't touch the fence? They say, we're not gonna do the fence for the neighbors, we're just gonna do the trails. My, so my question is, could this be two project? If the environmental impact report doesn't include fencing, we can just do the fence, the, the, the trail, and the fence could be another something, and then we can try to resolve it. That's my question for you. Then I have a question for Heather.
Yeah, the, the fence work was not, uh, an environmental requirement necessary of the trail project.
So is it possible to separate the two project?
They, they are already separated. The only exception are the eight homes on Lozano de Palmer.
Okay, but they're not including this bit. They were sep- they were already bid out from the, uh, from the project.
That's correct.
Okay, so it actually eventually could be two project. So, and my next question is for Heather. If it's two project, this is not included in this Redna Trail project. Is there any legal ways we can do it in a creative way to not spend so much money?
Well, I mean, I should say that you could have a fund that the, that the residents would then draw on to use the fence, and the city would reimburse them, but the city would only be able to reimburse them if they could show their contractor was registered with DIR and that their contract included all the required provisions of prevailing wage law, and that the contractor paid prevailing wage, and I don't think that'll get you to what the proposal is about having this fund, like, you know.
Okay, so it's still gonna be.
The residents comply with those requirements, and it would not make it any cheaper, so. The residents comply with those requirements and it would not make it any cheaper, so.
I think you just answered my question, it still has to be a city project, it cannot be like Vice Mayor Chow said, we're just having fun. And it's, we could give it to West Side Charitable and they, anybody wants to do it can draw it, something like that to be more. We're trying to find solutions here, okay, to be more flexible and you can somehow make a different project.
Yeah, the, 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 the ship has already sailed, right, this is already a part of this project, um.
No, but we, we're just saying that it can be.
Separated out for, for purposes of when you build it or how you describe it, um.
Okay, here, back to Roger, sorry, Mayor Pa, give me a little uh, room, so back to Roger. Say if all of a sudden this council said, we're not paying for fences, we're not doing fences, we're just gonna do the trails. You can, we can still do the trails, right, I'm, I'm not saying we're gonna do that, but just the trail project can still go on, you have a bit on the trail. We just do it, and then you just don't have new fences, we can still open up the trails, is that a possibility?
Yes, we, we have an awarded trail project, um, that's already done.
And then, okay, so I'm not saying I'm gonna do that, but if that's the case, then maybe the fencing could be more. Flexible, uh, anyway, I'm gonna leave the rest to the other councils to think, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei, next we have Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Willie.
Still trying to understand this, so hypothetically, let's say the city approved the project. Um, initially, we didn't consider the fence, the trail is opened. After a year, residents complained, and then the council decide, okay. We will provide grants for people to install um, fence at their own backyard. Then would this be considered a city project?
Um, ye- yes, it would, it would, it was as a result of the, the trail project that we did and it'd be another city project if council were to give us that direction.
Um. Focus on the facts that are before it's now, because I think.
Are to separate.
It, it, what we have now is a, is a project that's, that's been designed to have fence improvements along with it. And so what you're suggesting is trying to separate that out, which look works law makes clear you're not allowed to do.
Hmm.
It, 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 it would look like you're trying to avoid pervade.
No, I'm, I'm saying, forget the he- that the history now, that's the way this never happened. But now we, we're working on another trail project, trail X, A, X, Y, Z. The trail X, Y, Z project, we funded the trail, it was built. After a year, people complained and then come to the council and say, okay, we should fund the fence. Now we decide to fund the fence for X, Y, Z, providing us grant for people who um, to, to apply for reimbursement.
So, um.
That then.
I could eliminate that and get back to you with that answer, I have nothing a difficult time doing legal analysis on the fly at eleven o'clock at night. So I, if you, I, we can go, we can look into that and get back to you at a later time.
Okay.
Councilmember Moore.
Okay, um, so the, the direction that this discussion is, has taken kind of bothers me. Because uh, we had so many members of the public concerned about. Uh, privacy and noise and, you know, the potential intrusiveness of, of the, the trail. I'm concerned that I, I don't feel as though any, any person who lives along the trail is, is here to. To um, say what they think about having the trail separated out. Uh, and I, and I agree wholeheartedly with the city attorney that, that these, the trail and the fence go together. Um, and uh, and that's, and that's how it was brought to the public. Um, and, and I, I do remember hearing uh, concern about whether or not the, the noise. Analysis was even adequate, um, and that, that might have been the vice mayor who, who raised that concern, so. Um, to me, it's an unfortunate situation that, that has happened. Um, the shortages, the increase in cost, uh. However, I, I personally don't see a way around this. But it does make me wish that if we were going to do this project, that the bids had gone out sooner perhaps, rather than later. Maybe that would have been better, um, but we're, we are in this situation now and I'm concerned that if we prolong. Prolong this, that we're going to end up. Perhaps in a worse situation, I, I don't know, um, but anyway, need to keep the fence and the trail together as a project. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so uh, I'm continuing to think outside of the box or, you know, however we want to characterize it. So without a doubt, I see De Palma and Lozano as the A priority of importance. Okay, they're done, water under the bridge. The B priority are the houses that directly abut the trail, B. And the houses that are on the opposite side of the creek, uh, in my book is a C. I was a little bit disappointed, but you know, let's go ahead and, and well. A little bit disappointed when we increased the allotment from like the um, original three sixty-five to then five sixty-five and then. Seven sixty-five, and as I was understanding it, we didn't give direct direction. And so those increases went to both sides of the creek. The B is on the ones that are directly adjacent the, the trail. And so what I'm kinda asking at this point is that if we're gonna have to make some type of uh, uh, economy here. If, if Roger can tell us, you know, if there's eighty-three homes, there's gonna be forty-two, say, on each side of the creek. So if we're talking forty-two that are in the B category and we say, okay, what is the cost impact to those? And then on the far side of the creek, I mean, if, if I had a house on the far side of the creek. And somebody would said, hey, we're gonna give you a double fence with the mass-loaded vinyl, free of charge. I, I would have said absolutely, so that's where I'm concerned. Yeah, how much are we doing to the houses that are lack uh, least affected? Versus maintain, being able to possibly maintain the, the uh, level that we had agreed on. For those direct affected and just providing replacement fencing on the other side of the creek. We don't want people that their fences are falling down, but now all of a sudden have people walking or riding on the creek. Staring into their backyard, well, why did they let it fall down, that's not the issue. So still providing them with a basic fence opposite the creek. And uh, ma- you know, trying to maintain what we had already agreed on, on the uh, uh, trail side. And am I correct in that, or um, is it not quite monetarily significant? So that's, I think that's my last question.
Well, there's, there's forty-two homes opposite the trail, as you mentioned, uh, Councilmember Willie. Thirty-three of those homes made a request for, for fence improvements. There are thirty-three homes abutting the trail and twenty-nine of those thirty-three requested fence improvements. And, and you know, there've been numerous, numerous meetings, um. You know, with the residents regarding their fence choices, um, you know, we've, we've been in people's living rooms, there's been. Um, I mean, commitments have been made based on previous council's direction and, and we. You know, and, and how that was interpreted is how it was explained to, to the residents, and so this is uh, you know, these requests have already been made. Um, yeah, but, but it is not an insignificant amount of, of improvements o- opposite the trail.
Yeah, but what I, I'm trying to understand the significance of. Forty-two opposite the creek, thirty-three requested fences, um, so the other nine didn't. Of those thirty-three, how many are just the standard wood fence? Versus how many are the double fence with the mass-loaded vinyl? And I'm thinking none of those are uh, uh, pre-cast. So if you could give me an idea of that, that I think would help understand how we can kinda. Make sure the money is going to where it needs to be.
Yeah, only, only residents adjacent to the trail were, were eligible to request for pre-cast fence. There's no, no pre-cast fence opposite the trail, only, only adjacent to the trail. And I would, I would have to spend a little bit of time to, to tell you, you know, how much is wood and how much is mass-loaded vinyl. I don't, I don't have that right in front of me.
Okay, you know, maybe you could, if we did request a week or to the next council meeting. For the uh, city attorney to answer that question, and if you were able to a- answer this. I don't like delaying this, I mean, I hear from the residents, you know, by all means, well, the construction of the trail itself. Is not being delayed, we're just talking about the fence. I did like the build, the uh, discussion where you said you could open the gates. And let them uh, uh, use the trail and then when they did construction, close it. So that kinda helps preserve getting it up, open a little sooner. Now, if we can kinda understand how can we preserve the, the affected residents to the highest degree possible. And, and if we can't, we can't, but I'd sure like to know that before we close the door.
Well, some information, the, there are no mass-loaded vinyl fences opposite the tri- the tr- the trail either. So o- o- only, um, only wood fences are being installed opposite.
Ah, okay, well.
Okay.
If you, if you're sure of that, okay, I, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, great, Councilmember Moore, and then Vice Mayor Chow's your hand up still.
Um, I was just gonna suggest, and I, and I, I don't know if we need to see it now, but the, it, within the contract, uh, the second to last page. It has the nice map and it shows like phase one and phase two, so you can see what's opposite and adjacent. Um, so, and, and it's good to hear that the, the opposite side is all just um, standard wood fence, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Um, I, I'm not sure that there's, that, that there's some um, direction where we can go with this. Other than um, taking, taking the, the unfortunate um, cost increase. Um, with that, and, and I personally don't like the idea of having the fence, uh, I mean, the trail opened before the, the fences are, are in place. Because of the, the assurances that we gave to the, the residents um, uh, re- regarding noise and, and doing our best to, to. Wanna mitigate that, so I'm, I'm concerned about having, having it opened without uh, providing for the public what we promised them.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Moore, I, I, I haven't commented on this yet and I, I, I'll just say, I don't really see any. Options either that are in keeping with our commitments to the public. Um, other than just holding the project in its entirety in abeyance for an indefinite period of time. Until we can see significant cost reductions in uh, materials and bids. Uh, I mean, that, tha- that's what I see as our fundamental two options at this point, um, so. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised?
Trying to explore another option, what if we uh, fund the fence today for only the homes. Abutting the trail and for the, the, the ones that's opposite the trail. Um, maybe with delay, um, in two years. They could request, um, with a certain. Cap limit that will reverse them if they were replaced, maybe within certain years. Would that be, would we be able to modify the bid today for that option? And then would then the other, the ones that's opposing the trail later become a grant that. Um, could be considered a separate project?
I mean, I, I'm just uncomfortable, Vice Mayor Chow, with um. N- not delivering on our commitment to the homeowners across, uh, across from the trail. I mean, I, I think we made it very clear that that's what we were moving forward to do. So, so your proposal, you know, on, on a first instance, doesn't really address that. Um, or doesn't at all address that, and then the second instance is, I think we, we, you keep coming back to the same thing, which is, is there any way to kind of. Separate this out as a public works project? And, and while I'd be willing to, you know, entertain the notion of continuing this a couple of weeks, um, if for no other reason, so that I could. Move on with my day and get some rest, um, I, I, I think it really is pretty clear that. You, you know, there, there are two basic options at this point. I mean, I, I, I don't see how we get away from our commitments to the public insofar as the. Uh, infrastructure that was envisioned previously is concerned. Um, I mean, I, I wish, I wish that we had a little bit more, you know, uh, evinced willingness to try to look into the options, you know, but. Um, and it's a bit unfortunate, right, because, you know, that, that, that lack of willingness is delivered by the, the very, you know. People that are, are expressing that, so i- i- it's not like we can go to another doctor and get a second opinion, right? I mean, without some significant amounts of uh, movement that I'm not frankly willing to undertake between now and then, and so you would have to do it yourself. But um, I, 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 I think, the, the way I'm looking at it, there, there really are just two basic options. You either fund this or you put the project on hold, I mean, I, I respect your tenacity uh, a- as always, but. I, I, I don't see what you're saying is, is really moving the needle uh, beyond that basic assessment. Um, so, uh, you know, I don't have other hands raised at this point. Um, Councilmember Wei and Councilmember Willie, you do have your hands raised.
I, I would like, yes, thank you, Mayor Pa, I would like to add to your point. I don't see, I, I really, yeah, I, I talked to Heather and, and Roger, I don't see an option to separate the project. And I do see your point that we, our commitment to our residents needs to be kept. So either we postpone the project or we go ahead and approve it and spend the money. And I don't see postponing project as an option either, this has been, you know, going on before I was a council. And um, you know, um, we have a commitment and we have a bid on project, since like our project price at least is pretty good. It's just the fencing pr- price has gone up, so I would, I would go along and just approve it. That, that would be my, my, my position now.
Okay, Councilmember Wei and Councilmember Willie, you have the floor now.
Um. I, I think in some respects, I, I think we need to, you know, go ahead and move on, but it sure. And maybe it was on a slide in that uh, it didn't uh, catch me enough. So thirty-three fences on the far side of the creek, now it's only wood. Um, when I had my fence replaced, it was forty-five dollars a linear foot, but it's not a public works project. And so if I take seventy-five dollars a linear foot and if I say a hundred feet per house. And thirty-three houses, I come up with, say, two hundred and fifty thousand for the far side of the creek. Leaving essentially, um, uh, four hundred thousand for the uh. Thirty-three house, the twenty-nine houses, are, are those numbers, am I close? I mean, that, you sure sound like, you know, four hundred thousand for thirty, for twenty-nine houses and. Is that coming out correct?
Council, um, Director Lee, you, you need to unmute yourself.
Uh, the, the unit costs are just, that's not, that's not what the bidding environment is producing, um.
Oh, that's right, there's, yeah, it's a price, costs are going up, okay, so, okay, good enough.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Willie, Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, so I guess we should vote, I think, yeah, we need to um, honor the commitment. And on what I, what I was just trying to explore, if there's any way at all. For the city to save some taxpayer dollars, but if not, we'll just have to fund it, yeah.
Thank you for your comment, Vice Mayor Chow, I, you know, I, I, I think your point is a really good one, you know, perhaps before a project. Uh, like this commences, it may be a good idea for staff to review uh, as part of the project workflow. To see if that could be part of the palette of options presented uh, to the council and public uh, for future purposes. Uh, but in any event, we have a motion on the table, it's been. Uh, but in any event, we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. Uh, we've had, um, a significant amount of discussion on it. I thank our council for it. I thank our members of the public for sharing their viewpoints, uh, as well as staff for your ongoing work, uh, on this item. And Councilmember Wei, you do have your hand up. Did you wanna make a comment before we?
One more clarification question. We're not voting on the reimbursement, right? Just the four projects, just the five items.
Alright.
That's correct. The motion on the table is as reflected in the, uh, in the agenda as the staff recommendation.
Thank you for the certification.
You're welcome. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand up? Did you wanna make?
The staff wants us to give them direction on the reimbursement amount, right?
No, it, it, it's all under the recommended actions. Uh, there, there's no request for.
Oh, we, yeah, yeah, pardon me. We, we were looking at council's input on the reimbursement amount. You know, right, right now, the res- the precast concrete residents have been, um, advised a hu- a maximum one hundred and seventy dollars per foot. And if, uh, if we're, if we don't have any input on that, then that is what we will, um, proceed with.
This one, I think, so this privacy fence reimbursement for the precast con- concrete one. So my understanding is the, the, the city promise the cap will be one seventy per foot. And then if we decide on one seventy per foot, um, the cost to the city will be the middle row. And then the cost to the residents will be the bottom row. But we need to make a decision on one of these four, right?
I see. Wh- what item number in the recommendations does this fall under?
It, it, it's not part of the recommended actions, Mayor. Um, I'm just asking for input on that.
Okay, so you want a, uh, I, I suppose since we have this motion on the table, um, we could either, we could either amend the motion or, uh, try to vote with what we have on the table. Um, but in terms of the fiscal difference, I mean, is it, is it basically a seventy thousand dollar difference uh, between a hundred and seventy dollars, uh, per foot and a hundred dollars per foot? Just taking the extremes of the cost to the city between two hundred and seventy-three thousand and three hundred and forty-six thousand?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Um, okay, so, you know, I, I would like to, I would like to move this along, and if we can, if we can get a modified motion, uh, to reimburse to the, um, extent on the right-hand side of what we see at a hundred dollars per foot, uh, I would be in support of that. Um, who is the, uh, person who moved this item? Can you remind me? Was it Councilmember? Councilmember Wei, would you be willing to? Okay, great, far-right column. And Councilmember Moore, would you be willing to second that as a modification to the motion?
Uh, no, I'm not, not willing to do that. Okay, if I'm understanding this.
Sorry.
Yeah, so if I'm understanding this chart correctly, what you're saying is that you want to increase the cost to the city? And so what would the new, new cost be? So we told the residents that we would have a hundred and seventy dollars per foot. Is that correct?
Well, no more. We, we told those residents no more, so, I mean, I, I'd like to see if we can deliver, uh, I mean, because I'm still sympathetic to the residents. I mean, in, insofar as this whole process was concerned and the fact that they have, you know, they, they obviously have some ongoing heartburn about this, so. I mean, for me, um, the seventy thousand dollar difference is fine in order to deliver a, a cost savings to, to those residents. And, you know, compared to what we're being asked to put in, it's, uh, essentially a negligible increase on the one point, I think it was more like one point four million increase to the overall budget. Someone had quoted one point nine. I think, I think the overall numbers were about one point four. So, so I would just, I would just ask that we, you know, bring it down to the hundred dollars per foot. Hopefully, everything's copacetic and, you know, the cost of lumber doesn't double by tomorrow, and we're able to kinda, you know, move on with our lives on this project.
Okay, okay, well, let me, let me just ask real quick. So the only difference then is, is two hundred and seventy-three thousand six going up to three hundred and forty-six thousand for the cost to the city? That's, that's the, that's the difference?
Yes.
That's the whole difference?
That's the difference.
Okay, second?
All right.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Paul. I, I haven't, I'm sorry, I should, I would like to make the, the amendment with a different number.
Okay, what number did you have in mind?
Okay, because with the seven-inch wood plus the, um, mass loaded vinyl, that, those homes are getting the cost, we're paying for three fifty-four per square foot. And we're talking about the precast concrete, it's four thirty-one. The difference is seventy-seven dollars. I don't think we should charge the precast more than, I mean, somebody else is also getting that benefit of. Um, so we have houses that the city is paying for three fifty-four. They're the eight-inch wood plus the vinyl.
Okay, and Councilmember Wei, just, you know, just to respect.
Seventy-seven dollars per square foot.
Let, let me understand. So you want another column to the right of a hundred dollars per fo- per foot to become seventy-seven dollars per foot?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so I, I'm just gonna encapsulate it to give direction to staff. I know we can do this here, but let's, let's just, you know, translate this over, um. Okay, so the, I, I think the delta would end up being, um, a, a fraction of approximately a third of the delta, so uh, about a third of seventy thousand, which is about twenty-three thousand or so. Uh, let me go to your secondor, Councilmember Moore. Um, would you be willing, based upon Councilmember Wei's logic here, which is that the people asking for mass loaded vinyl are getting a certain monetary benefit, that we want to, uh, make tandem out to the people, uh, asking for precast concrete?
Um, we, we, oh, explain that to me another way, so.
Okay, so mass loaded vinyl people are getting, are getting ream- are, are getting the cost covered to a certain, uh, monetary, um, uh, price. And so Councilmember Wei simply wants to make the reimbursement for, uh, the precast concrete, um, such that the value being delivered, so to speak, to those residents is equal to the mass loaded vinyl residents. Whi- which is to say, why should the precast concrete people, um, be getting less of that value if they made the precast concrete decision? They're in effect being punished to the tune of twenty-three dollars a foot, uh, for choosing, um, for choosing that option.
And they get a, they get a product that isn't going to rot or have termites eat, so, yeah, it makes sense to me. So I'm, I'm not willing to go lower on that. I won't second it, sorry.
To a hundred. Um, so Councilmember Wei, I'm sorry, you don't have a second, um, but at least you tried. So if you're okay with it, you, you do have an existing motion, we're at a hundred dollars a foot. It's better than the hundred and seventy that, you know, people started this meeting understanding. And I will note that, you know, there are no, I don't think members of the public hear from, from, from that, uh, that stretch, so. I, I, I think maybe chalk it up to a pleasant surprise when they find out. And Councilmember Wei, would you be willing just to maintain that motion on the table?
Okay, so let me just explain it one more time if, uh, Councilmember Moore still won't accept it.
But what's the proposal now? It's one hundred?
It's a hundred dollars per foot, Vice Mayor Chow, yes.
What I'm trying to say is there are homes who the city is paying three fifty-four per square foot.
Per foot.
And so they're not, they're paying reimbursement zero. And for the pre-concrete, they're paying three thirty-one, and we're asking to reimburse one hundred dollars. So they a- actually are paying more than other homes. So I'm trying to match the maximum, so that, you know, the maximum we give now is three fifty-four per house. That's for free. And the pre-conquest, yes, they get a better deal because they get precon- pre, whatever it's called, precast concrete. But I don't think we should, they should be penalized just because they pick that. They should match the highest and pay the difference. What I'm trying to say is I think that's reasonable for us to say, hey, you got a better deal, you got seventy-seven dollars more than the city that, everybody else gets, so we, you should reimburse the city for that. I, I just think that's a fair way to say that's what they get, because there are other homes who are, the city are paying three fifty-four. It's the eight-inch wood plus the mass vinyl. I, I know probably they won't be care about twenty-three dollars. I, and we don't either. I, with a one point nine million project, we're talking about less than eight thousand dollars difference. So I'm just saying that, to be fair, that would, how I see fair is fair. But if nobody is agreed, I'm okay with the one hundred, yeah.
I, um, fair.
Um, okay, so our, our hands are raised in the order of Vice Mayor Chow and then Councilmember Moore. Council, Vice Mayor Chow, you have the floor.
Yeah, so I agree with Councilmember Wei. Um, I think the reason that is probably the cost of the, the vinyl increased also, so that the difference is, um, so we are actually paying more for the wooden, for the vinyl, for those that, the ones that we said we are going to cover all the cost. Therefore, the precast people shouldn't, um, suffer. We should, um, to be fair, they should get the same amount of coverage that the, the vinyl people get. So I think that makes sense, um, yeah, so I would support that. Or another option is that's just both separately, or maybe we could delay the item, but maybe we don't want to.
No, I mean, we're very close on this. Um, so let me, let me hear from Councilmember Moore at this time. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, so I guess I'm, the question is for Roger. So if I was, if I was getting, um, the, the loaded vinyl, uh, how much would I pay? And I'm, and I'm adjacent to the creek, okay? I'm adjacent to the creek, or, or, I'm sorry, I'm adjacent to the trail, not the creek. I'm adjacent to the trail, um, what do I have to pay?
There, there's no charge.
Okay, I, I, okay, and I've got, I've got a hundred-foot backyard, and instead I wanna have the, the, uh, precast concrete. Same, same location. What do I, what do I pay? Under the hundred, under the, the, um, hundred per foot, uh, reimbursement amount, what do, what do I pay?
Well, if it's a hundred per foot, the average parcel width is eighty feet, so you pay eight thousand dollars.
Okay, but I'm saying I've got a hundred, so it's.
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars. I paid ten thousand dollars and I get a concrete fence that's going to last forever, right? Right, awesome. Okay, um, and, and so, so to me, that's the choice they made, and they, everyone that went in understood that that's how much it was gonna cost them. Uh, we, we told them that it was gonna cost a hundred and seventy, right, per foot? And now we're coming back and we're saying, nope, it's only gonna be a hundred. You're lucky, okay? Um, so they, they get that deal. I, personally, I'm not willing to go any lower because we're giving them the forever fence. So that's where I stand on that.
Okay, um, Councilmember Wei, I, I really would like us to get to.
Okay, so, so here's my last, if somebody else would second it, I, I, okay, so Councilmember Wei, this, uh, Moore, this is what I'm gonna try to tell you. The person who picked the A wood fence plus the vinyl, they are getting a great deal if that's what you're saying, because they don't have to pay zero. They actually getting a three hundred and fifty-four foot, uh, protective fence. That's their choice too, whether it rots or not, because that's their choice. The city is paying three hundred and fifty-four dollars per foot for that. And for other people who just picked the fence, it's a hundred ninety-six. Or six-inch composite is one twenty-nine per foot. So it's really people's choice what they want. But what I'm trying to say is, if the city wants to be fair, then the maximum that someone would be paying that it should be the difference between what they have to pay. You know, I'm, I'm just, I'm okay with a hundred, really. But I'm just saying that, we're talking about very minimal amount, so I, I'm okay with it. But I want you to understand my theory, because these people pick what they want, right? And, and because they're getting this much value, even if it's not pre-concrete, they are getting a three hundred and fifty-four per foot value that they're getting. It's an eight-inch plus the vinyl. For people who don't get the vinyl, they, uh, they, the cost is two oh six. And for people who get it's added one forty-eight. So I'm just trying to say, hey, these homes get three fifty-four, the pre-conquest is four thirty-one, so the pre-conquest do have to pay the difference. But it's difference is not a hundred, it's seventy-seven dollars. It's a minimum amount of money, and I think the city doesn't care. I don't think the residents really care. That was just my, my principle. But I'm okay with a hundred if nobody wants to second the seventy-seven.
Uh, okay, I, you know, and, and Councilmember Wei, I'd rather just get to a consensus selection here. I, I think your best shot of getting everyone's votes is to get to, uh, that point of a hundred dollars per foot. Let me go back to Vice Mayor Chow, who does have her hand raised next. Vice Mayor Chow, I, I, you know, I would greatly appreciate it. I, I appreciate your support for Councilmember Wei, but a- as I look at it, you know, if you second this, then we end up having a, a, a split vote, which I, I, I just, I, I, I would ask that we try to, you know, i- if you really feel that adamantly about it, we can always try to allocate more at a future date, but I think this is something that we're at right now, and we can, uh, we can pass w- with unanimity. Um, so Vice Mayor Chow, and I, I'll also point out that, look, you know, the difference between a hundred dollars per foot and seventy-seven dollars per foot, per foot, and you're talking about a one point four million dollar allocation, I mean, you might as well just pay for the thing outright. I mean, if you're really talking about those, you know, kind of incremental differences. So I, I would just say, let, let's keep it at a hundred dollars. Staff isn't even recommending anything below that amount. Um, and I, I, I think we should be at a pretty good point. Um, so Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand raised. Did you want to, um, speak to that?
So the difference is seventy-three thousand dollars, right? So if, uh, we do a hundred dollar per foot, um, the city pays, pays seventy-three thousand dollars less, right? That's what.
Well, we're between a hundred and seventy and a hundred, that's correct, yeah.
No, seventy-three less.
Well, no, the, the, the city pays a hundred. I- i- if, if, if the, if the residents are paying a hundred and seventy per foot, then the city is paying seventy-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if the residents paid a hundred dollar per foot, the city pays on three forty-six. So with the, a hundred dollar per foot, we save, the city will get seventy-three thousand extra from the resident for.
No, 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 you're reading, you're reading the chart wrong. We're charging the residents a hundred dollars per foot, all right? So they're giving the city that money. So, so, so the cost to the city is that second row, and that's how much the, the city will have to dish out. Okay, so the city will have to increase the amount that it's paying by that seventy-three thousand. Okay, so the amount reimbursed is what the residents will give back to the city. And you'll notice as you go down in number per foot, that number decreases. We're getting back less, all right? So, so, so the residential expectation as of the beginning of this meeting was that they would be paying a hundred and seventy dollars per foot if they had precast concrete. Now, we're talking about a hundred per foot, or possibly going down to Councilmember Wei's, um, suggestion of seventy-seven. So I, I'm just asking, I, I think we have a consensus at a hundred dollars per foot.
Okay.
All right, um, now we have Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Wei. I, you know, I, I just, you know, honestly, I would like to, you know, put a punctuation.
I'm gonna modify my mic.
Okay, um, so Councilmember Moore's hands down. Councilmember Wei, you've muted.
I would modify mine to be a hundred dollars.
Oh, okay, so that's what's on the table right now, uh, so thank you. Um, okay, um, Madam City Clerk, seeing no further commentary, would you please, uh, and, and Vice Mayor Chow, I do wanna thank you for pointing that out. I, I, that had slipped my, uh, attention, that there was this ask from staff as well. Um, so conversation well taken. Um, Madam City Clerk, would you please vote us?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, uh, we are now on to the end of our agenda. Um, I, you know, I will ask, um, out of deference to the fact that we do have a bit of a turnover, um, and there are certain logistical, um, you know, kinds of, uh, allocations of bandwidth that would be much appreciated. Um, the, uh, city manager and I do talk every Thursday, uh, in a debrief, uh, after the Tuesday council meetings with regard to, uh, how future agenda items are affected. But I would like to have, um, it's only a half-hour conversation. I would like to have that allocation of bandwidth to talk about future issues as to how we're gonna be planning out, um, the agendas, uh, uh, after, after she, um, after she resigns from our city. So, um, if we could, you know, um, very respectfully, uh, keep our future agenda items on, on tap uh, for the future, I, I, I'd appreciate that. And also note that we do have our work plan, uh, items as well. Uh, but of course, that's up to you. Uh, this is the last item here, uh, prior to adjournment, and that is, uh, council and staff comments. uh prior to adjournment, and that is uh council staff comments and future agenda agenda items. Uh, as usual practice, I'll go to Madam City Manager first. Madam City Manager, did you want to share any comments uh prior to going to council here?
I have no further comments for this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Manager. Our next uh hand is raised from Councilmember Willie. You have the floor.
So uh I'd like to request an agenda item, which it it doesn't need to be rushed. But I do think it should be as part of this same uh video record. And that is a study session for these uh uh maintenance that's needed for the Stockelmeier House and the Snyder House. I I I think that it's been very evident to us that things are not being done as they they're needed maintenance-wise, and I don't think it falls under some existing bucket. So it should come back to us for a study session.
Okay, um, noted. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised as well. Uh, you have the floor.
I'd like to request a dog-off-leash area to be placed on the June fifteenth agenda. This item was on this year's work program. I just checked the city website for work program status. And I couldn't find any update. It's supposed to be finished by fall of twenty twenty. And I understand due to COVID, it's delayed, but I don't still, we didn't never got an update. Why is it delayed? It's an outdoor event. Why do we have to delay that for? I so I don't know what left, what's remaining that still need to be done. We couldn't do it uh during COVID and.
And uh thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. I see a hand raised uh physically from our city manager. Would you, would you like to speak to that uh comment?
Yes, just a quick update on the DOLA. The reason, the part that was delayed is if the pilot had run the entire length of what we had, what we had originally planned, then there would be um part of the pilot that would be running with organized sports on the field as well. So that had not been able to be done because organized sports couldn't play for the majority of COVID. That's why it was delayed.
Oh, so we don't know the impact of.
Correct, that's correct.
And then we will have the the met, the 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 inclusive playground there too?
Correct. And so so it was delayed because we couldn't kind of pilot it with organized sports play on the adjacent fields. And then additionally, part of the DOLA thing was to expand a DOLA to other parks. And so that's the other piece that we just can't do because of the work programs.
Yeah, part of the work program description was also looking at other areas for DOLA, right? But we haven't.
Right, but that's the part we we just are not gonna have time to do right now. So so the the DOLA piece, the DOLA at Jollyman, needs to really extend the pilot in order to be able to have field use of other types with it.
So right now is the pilot continuing?
Let's get a um, let's get an update. No, let's not have, uh, you know, substantive discussion on this uh further. Uh, I appreciate the quick update. Um, I I'll do my best to get onto our June fifteenth uh agenda and update. And Madam City Manager, um, maybe you can try to allocate five to ten minutes as to the update that you're describing here so that we do have the opportunity um to uh have a more extensive dis- discussion. Um, and perhaps we can try to get some outreach uh to the uh DOLA community. Uh, I I appreciated their turnout tonight, but I I mean, if we can try to curtail uh the the discussion, I'll 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 put a timeline on it and I'll go accordingly. But Vice Mayor Chow, I'll I'll see what we can do about placing uh an informational item on June fifteenth.
Yeah, if it's on the June fifteenth, besides Jollyman, the work program actually also include the exploring other areas. So that's include that discussion.
I'm supposed to be meeting with them tomorrow as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, other areas, that that's a pretty expansive ask, uh, Vice Mayor Chow. That's a, that's that's quite a different um update item. But let me let me leave it to um a discussion with the city manager on Thursday now, see what makes sense here.
Okay.
All right, um, Councilmember Way, you have the floor. Uh, you'll need to unmute yourself, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Way, you're muted. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, I I agree that the the DOLA at Jollyman Park is almost done, needs to be separate. Um, but anyway, thank you for accommodating it. I have a couple um agenda items, but you don't have to hurry it. Um, I really like the uh safe firearm storage um proposal at home, considering what we just happened. And I did have a talk with um Captain Urina and then, so I I'm very interested in putting this on the future agenda when we have time. So we can have an ordinance for safe firearm storage at home. A- and uh and then also, I don't know if you remember, a couple people, Dan Marshall and John Enos came and talked about for us to support the climate change endorsement. And we're such an advanced city that we really are proud of our environmental um issues. So if we could, you could somehow put on an agenda item when we have time, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I I mean, as to the second item, uh, Councilmember Way, I'll 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 say that this has been visited to a a pretty thorough extent in the past by city council. Um, at at that point, we didn't, we didn't take up the idea. It is, it is a fairly um fairly innovative one. Um, and I think that it's something that um we 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 should very carefully consider if the idea is to is to take it up. But it's not insignificant. It it's a fairly significant uh overarching uh plan that um, you know, really would require uh a federal buy-in in order to implement effectively. But um I'll 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 take both under advisement. Thank you very much. The safe firearm storage item has been uh something that's been approached uh to several council members, including myself, uh, in the near-term past. And and of course, with the tragedy at the VTA um facility in San Jose earlier uh last week, uh, you know, it it's something that I I know that people have a uh, you know, a visceral appetite to do do something about, um, you know, th- this particular uh issue that's, you know, of course not um, n- not not unfortunately seeming to go away by itself. And um, you know, i- i- it's a it's something that I'll certainly talk with our city manager about in terms of what our um, what our bandwidth looks like. And um, well, I'll I'll give you an update next time we meet as to uh these various items. And and also for um the benefit of the public, we do have future agenda items as well as a document. And so the status on those uh is is going to be updated after uh the city manager and I uh speak on this on Thursday. Uh, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand up, and I'll uh give you the floor as we close out.
Uh, Councilman or Vice Mayor has hers up before mine.
Oh, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, did you still have an item uh on top of the request on uh on DOLA?
Um, no, I I think I'd like, well, I'd like to point out the safeguard storage issue. I looked that up. It's pretty controversial, so um, we need to look deeper before we want, it it's going to take time.
Yeah, I mean, just to remind this is not an invitation for discussion on, right, I mean, a- a- and and I apologize for elaborating, but you know, when you talk as a third, we're w- we're we're kind of in um in some straits there. So, uh, Councilmember Willie, uh, again, I'll let you close out. Everyone's had your opportunity.
Yeah, so.
Oh, no, actually, you already talked about Stockelmeier and Snyder Hammond. So actually, I should be given the opportunity to advise uh to Councilmember Moore, if she chooses to take it. I'm not. Um, I I don't have items to add, uh, but um, I don't see any hand raised from Councilmember Moore. Uh, so Councilmember Willie.
Mayor Paul, I will speak. Um, so I I had I had tried to put uh Stockelmeier on the work plan and I uh unsuccessfully uh attempted to do that. So I I am a little surprised, taken aback to hear it being suggested now. Thanks.
I just, you know, just, I'm not sure that our newest councilman uh realized that if council needs two people for an agenda item. So the fact that I brought it up, it won't be as as I understand it, it won't be a study item. Okay, I I brought it up, but without another councilman saying, yeah, we should study this, it won't come to us. Am I correct?
Uh, y- our our past practice has been to require two councilmembers, yes, to indicate that an item will be teed up for a future agenda. That's correct.
Right, and I and I understand that, but I already did not have the will of the council in support, so I'm not gonna push it again. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, okay, well, I think we've aired out our uh appetite for future agenda items. Again, I'll repeat the caveat. Um, I'll I'll do my best to accommodate. Um, but again, we're we're in transition and so we'll you know, take that under advisement and try to move everything smoothly along. Uh, we have the budget. We have a work plan finalization uh coming up in our second meeting or before our second meeting in June. And we also have a a number of personnel-related uh meetings that we'll need to take uh in the foreseeable future. So without further ado, I want to thank everyone for um the meeting this evening. And uh we'll go ahead and adjourn uh tonight's June first meeting to June fifteenth. And so we'll see you uh at our regularly scheduled meeting of the Cupertino City Council on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you very much. Good night and meeting adjourned.